Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, February 25th, 2019. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 15th, 2019, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Troy Town News. Second, on January 15th, 2019, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 15th, 2019, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Massa?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Orozco?
Here.
Mr. San Clemente?
Here.
Mr. Seiya?
Here.
Mr. Moretti has been excused. Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge Allegiance, please?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which this stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Trottley, may I swear in the professionals, please?
The test one of the decision to hold truth, the truth of God. The records we collect at tonight, we have Miss Vera, Mr. Conlet, and our planner is Christine Bell, and Matt Howard, all sworn.
Thank you. Approval of minutes?
We have no minutes this evening.
No minutes. Vouchers?
No vouchers.
Correspondence?
No correspondence.
Wow. Resolutions, case number BA 1826, Lakewood Farm and Dell LLC. Resolution granting use variance preliminary and final major site plan approval. Eligible voters?
Mr. Just skip the first. Hughes, start with Mr. Hughes.
Mr. Hughes?
Mr. Massa.
Mr. Massa, Mertens, O'Donnell, Orozco, San Clemente, Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve application.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Massa?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized, thank you.
Case number BA 1709A, Fairfield Industrial Park LLC. Resolution granting amended use variance approval. Eligible voters, Hughes, Massa, Mertens, O'Donnell, Orozco, San Clemente, and Nansen.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Hughes.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Massa?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Resolutions memorialized, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna change the agenda a little bit, try to move some of the easier applications through real quick. The first one we're gonna hear is case number BA 1835, MLMBJ LLC. Rogerio, this is a certificate of nonconformity. Application of Michael Rogerio as applicant in MLMBJ LLC is owner seeking a certificate of nonconformity to continue use of the building for showroom, display, warehouse on premises known as Block 178, 16.01, 392 Adelphia Road. Expiration date May 2nd, 2019.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, board professionals. My name is Todd Cohen. I'm the attorney for the applicant, MLMBJ LLC, who is represented here this evening by Mr. Michael Rogerio, who is the managing member of the entity. The property in question that we're seeking the certificate of nonconformity for is 392 Adelphia Road, better known as the old Rapsod Farm, and from 1995 to 2015 was the Dory Fence Company, just east of our house tavern on 524. Property consists of the main house or farmhouse, which has a residential use, the carriage house, and a cottage house, both of which also have residential uses, a farm operation which takes up six acres and the two barns, and the warehouse on the property which is the subject matter of tonight's application. Since the late 30s, there's always been a use in that warehouse for purposes other than agricultural. And over the years, there's been various types of light manufacturing, light assembly, and most recently fence companies and landscape design type companies. My client purchased the property in 2015, and since then has received two certificates of continued occupancy for various, for two fence companies and landscape companies, and is now seeking a kitchen and bath remodeling company to operate on that facility. After meeting with the land use people, it was determined that a certificate of nonconformity would be in order. So that is why we are here this evening. I would like to have Mr. Rogerio sworn so he can testify to not only, since he's owned the property, but we're gonna go through the history of the property as well. I have a packet which I submitted with my application that contains about 10 documents that my client obtained from the various zoning files over the years, and which are germane to the history of the property. Again, they're all part of your application already. I just did it for convenience so you'd have it in front of you as we go through it this evening. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
They were submitted, you already see them. These are just, yes, I did. If not, I'll let him mark mine.
Yes, that packet would basically be what's in A4.
But I believe that's already been premarked as A4, we'll just pop a check if we're sure.
One for you.
Do I have any kind of map?
Well, I'm just looking over the packet, Todd. Perhaps the, and we stand, I'll spare him any, so that we can begin to start. It's our claim to please, and, this is where the test one of the decision to hold truth, the truth of God.
Yes, yes.
State your name for the record, please.
Michael, and you, Rogerio.
Thank you, you may proceed.
Yes, this is what you submitted as A4.
Did the board have the small survey map that we submitted to that might be helpful? I don't know.
Matt could probably put it up on the screen.
Do you have enough copies for the board?
I do.
I'll take this.
Why don't we, yeah, that way the board...
That's also marked into evidence as...
This one, is it? We've already won in here.
A3.
It's a different?
It is different.
Okay.
No, I think we had a survey, too.
This is this one?
Yeah, yeah, we do have it. That's A3.
And we've also received a T and M letter of January 2nd, 2019, from Mr. Conlet, which we will also be able to address the questions therein. So, Michael, you are the managing member above the owner and the applicant, correct?
That is correct.
And you purchased the property in 2015, correct?
That is correct.
And prior to your purchasing the property, you had a meeting with the then zoning officer, Chris Jackson, and I believe somebody else from community development regarding the potential uses for the warehouse on the property, is that correct?
That is correct. And in addition to the meeting here in Howell, we had Chris Jackson come out to the property and walk through the warehouse to tell us the potential uses.
Okay. And you just described how that meeting went for the board and what was the end result of the meeting?
The meeting here in Howell, we spoke about the use that was in the building prior and what I can do moving forward. And I was told that I needed to stay under the radar. And by under the radar, they meant, and I was told, again, this is how they described it to me, they didn't want an operation that had 15 or 20 trucks pulling out at 8:00 in the morning onto Adelphia Road at the hour that school buses were coming. They didn't want a high-traffic use. They wanted something that was quiet, a pick-and-pack operation, a contractor's office, an assembly operation, something where the employees would come, it wouldn't be a high volume of employees, and perhaps a few vehicles during the course of the day, like service vehicles, would leave the premises. And after that meeting here, we set another date. Chris Jackson came out to the premises, he saw the operation, and he said that everything I was told at the meeting would be sufficient if I could find that type of tenant.
And based on those meetings, after you closed, you found Allstate Fence Company, is that correct?
That is correct. And the reason, prior to my closing, I wanted to make sure, prior to purchasing the property, that I knew what I was getting into with the nonconforming use. And then I did, once I closed, I bought Allstate Fence in.
Okay, and now we received a CCO in July of 2015, correct?
That is correct.
And I believe that CCO was like the second or third and last item in your packet, if you wanted to take a look at that. And then in, they left after a couple of years, and then in February of 2018, we received the second CCO for Phoenix Fence Company, is that correct?
That is correct.
And they were also a fence company?
Fence manufacturer, distributor, and installer.
Okay.
Are they manu, are they manufacturing there?
Yes, yeah. Most fence companies, I'm in the insurance business and I have about 18 or 19 fence companies. Most fence companies do manufacture in the back, it's assembly of wood and PVC.
Okay, now, that's not in the warehouse, correct, or it is?
They were assembling in the warehouse, sure.
Okay, will they still be continuing to assemble in the warehouse?
No, fence company's gone.
Oh, Phoenix is gone, too?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So there's no fence company there now?
No, there's no extrusion or anything like that in their assembly. It's basically they buy the parts and put them together.
No, I was just wondering, you know, so there's no fence company on the site now, period? Okay, is the warehouse vacant at this time?
Yes.
Or no?
It is.
Okay.
Right. We just wanna run now through the history of the property, of the warehouse in particular. That'll be following along in the packet with the documentation that starts from March 10th, 1975 memo from the Assistant Building Inspector to the zoning officer.
Are you referring to A4, correct?
I am, I am. The first item in A4. So, Mr. Rogerio, from the best you've been able to determine from the documentation file, from the 1940s until 1975, the warehouse was used mainly for the manufacture of wood products of one type or another, is that correct?
That is correct.
And if we look at the March 10th, 1975 memo from the Assistant Building Inspector to the zoning officer, it basically speaks about a complaint that was filed by a resident back in March of 75, that furniture was being manufactured in the warehouse, is that correct?
Yes.
And the memo stated basically that they were gonna inspect the property, and they did confirm that there was a furniture operation in process, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that memo was, on the bottom, there's some handwritten note that said, follow-up on above on 31395, and it's initialed by the building officer, is that correct?
Yes.
And then our next item in the packet is a July 1st, 1975, letter from the owner of the property at the time, and that was H. Robert Rapp, is that correct?
Yes, that is.
And that letter was written to Mr. Monaco, who again was the building, zoning officer at that time, is that correct?
That is correct.
And could you, I say state, what that letter tells the zoning officer?
Basically, he states that going back to the 30s, that the building in question was used for other than agricultural, and he says that various types of wood products used mostly in the area of vaccine manufacturing and application had been continually manufactured and sold from the late 40s at that premise.
And based on that letter, that operation continued, as far as you know, is that correct?
Yes, and even states that it was a continuing use of what was there prior.
And then, in the early 80s, the property was purchased by a gentleman named Richard Rizzo, and the company was Image Enterprises that operated out of there, is that correct?
Yes.
And what type of business was Image Enterprises?
Image Enterprises manufactured fiberglass, lawn design, statues, and water fountains. Many of the water fountains at Disney were manufactured on that property. I have brochures going back to his original, his brochures, his sales brochures.
And in the files, you were able to find two documents that related to this particular use. One was a construction permit application, also found in, so this should be the next item in C4, which identified the property and, as the owner, Richard Rizzo, and it was a permit to do construction to the property, is that correct?
Yes.
And it identifies the property number 11 and B11 as a business, and the use for garage fabrication and storage, is that correct?
Yes.
And there was also a second document, which was a construction permit dated October 17th, 1989, also in the name of Richard Rizzo, for interior and exterior renovations of commercial buildings, is that correct?
Yes, that is.
And that permit was for building, plumbing, electric, and fire protection, correct?
Correct.
So that brings us to the 1990s, and in 1995, the property was purchased by the Dory Fence Company, is that correct?
Yes.
In fact, there was a letter in the file dated June 28th, 1995, from Mr. Christopher Dory to Lily and Homer, who's then the planning board secretary, I believe, and that's a copy of that letter that we have in the package, is that correct?
Yes, that is.
And could you tell us what that letter basically tells the county?
That letter, he refers to what was there prior, which was Image Park and what Image Park did, and then he expresses what he wants to do with the property and feels that it'll be a continuing use of the warehouse.
And the letter also states that it's an intention to live on the property and to fix up the main house, and it also describes the type of business that he has, the amount of employees, et cetera, correct?
That is correct.
And in response to that June 28th, 1995 letter, there is a June 29th, 1995 memo from Julie Leary, Assistant Land Use Officer, to Mr. Dory, is that correct?
That is correct.
And what does that letter state very succinctly?
That letter states that his proposed use would be a continuation of the previous use.
And that any expansion of that use would require a site plan, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and a continued certificate of occupancy would be needed?
Yes.
And the next documentation in our package is a December 7th, 1995 memo, also from Ms. Leary, to the township manager Frank Edwards, is that correct?
That is correct.
And in that memo, it basically identifies the uses from 1975 on and what Image Park did when they purchased the property. And it also states that they feel that that, that this was a pre-existing use and that his proposed use would not be an expansion of same, is that correct?
That is correct.
And again, it's referred to the Dory and the Dory Fence Company proposal, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
And finally, which we go to that, and the next document is a continued certificate of occupancy issued by Howell Township on February 8th, 1996, to the Dory Fence Company and Christopher Dory, is that correct?
Yes, that is.
And it states that it is for commercial resale purposes, is that correct?
Yes.
And it's dated that February 8th, 1996.
Correct.
Let's see. I believe there was also one additional letter that relates to that property that's in our package. It's a letter dated November 25th, 19, 2014, from a Sharon Gomare Carreri who worked for Dory Fence Company, is that correct?
Yes, and she gave me that letter to bring to Chris Jackson to try and find potential uses as we were going through the due diligence for purchasing the property.
And that letter basically states that Dory Fence used the operation, the building for their corporate and sales office, manufacturing facility, warehouse, and contractor's yard, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
It also provided the hours of operation and stated that the counter sales were retail to the public, wholesale to contractors, and fence dealers, correct?
That is correct.
And then we have, I believe, three other documents that are in our package, and one is dated May 5th, May 12th, 2015, and that was your CCO for change in ownership when you purchased the property, is that correct?
Yes, that was.
And then the July 21st, 2015, CCO for Allstate Fence?
Correct.
And the February 2nd, 2018, CCO for Phoenix Fence?
Correct.
So that's a brief history of all the uses that we've been made aware of since the 40s, and now you're proposing a new tenant to occupy the property, is that correct, the warehouse?
Yes.
And that goes by Inspire Home Remodeling and Design, is that correct?
That is correct.
And what does that company do?
Very similar to the advertisements you see on television with Bathfitter. Their claim to fame is a bathroom in a day. They come in, they remodel your tub, the surround area, the vanity in the bathroom, perhaps the tiling in the bathroom, and they wanna use the property for their showroom and the back warehouse for the assembly of the product that goes out to the individual homes.
And it's our understanding that they will have three salesmen, is that correct?
That is correct. There'll be three salesmen.
Two installers?
There'll be two installers, one-person assembly.
That's correct. And there'll be no retail, is that correct?
That's correct. It's not a retail operation.
Okay. And the products are basically custom-made for their clients, is that correct?
Yes. What happens is a salesman meets at a client's home, they take the measurements, they come up with the new design, and then the client can come back to the showroom to see what the actual product is like, as opposed to a small two-by-two sample, you can actually see a bathtub with the surround to appreciate the colors and so on.
Will they be doing any fiberglass work or any type of?
No, that's all done somewhere in a manufacturing plant out in Ohio. What happens here is just they assemble it, that's all they do. It's delivered on, like a yellow freight truck on a pallet, and it's labeled by job.
And their hours of operation are Monday through Friday, 9 to 5, and Saturday, 9 to 1?
That is correct.
And do you feel that the existing facility would have enough sufficient parking for the intended use?
Sure, there's ample parking. There's handicap parking as well, handicap bathrooms, it's not a problem.
So, the certificate of nonconformity that we would be seeking then would cover certain sales, warehousing, light assembly, showroom, and office, is that correct?
That is correct.
And you would prefer that the, if the board saw it fit to issue one, that it would be of that general nature and not so specific as to this particular tenant?
Yes.
So that we could, there'd be some parameters for the future use?
Yes, assuming that, again, we get a lease, his lease runs out, and the next guy that comes in, maybe he's a fence guy again, and we can go back to the same scenario.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes, sir.
Will there only be one commercial use on the property at a time?
That's correct.
Won't be multiple tenants?
That's correct.
There's only one warehouse.
Okay. Mr. Seiya?
Is the resident also gonna be on the property?
There are three residents right now on the property. It's 12 acres, the property.
The, each residence is independent of the other, and none of the tenants in those homes are employees of any businesses on the property?
That is correct.
It's been there.
Oh, I got you, just, my question is, basically, you know, there's 30, there was 30 employees at one time, previous, right? As long as the septic system is able to handle, because what they're showing is this is a septic and well-watered property, right? So as long as we're not overloading it, we're, I think...
Mike, could you just address the septic and well situation on the property?
Yes, everything is separated. The commercial versus the residential is separate. We get separate bills for the commercial, for the gas and electric, we have separate septic systems, and the same with the wells. We separate what's used commercially versus residentially.
And also, am I correct, you have to go through approvals through Monmouth County, correct?
That is correct. The Board of Health comes out for the septic and the well.
Yes, or Mr. Massa?
Does each residence have its own well?
No, no, the residents share a well. It's a massive well, and I have three, I forget what they're called, I wanna call them like an expansion tank, so everybody has their own water pressure.
So you have one well for the three residents?
That is correct.
And you have one well for the...
There's a separate well on the back of the property, that's correct.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Matt, I'm gonna let you jump in right now.
Yeah, so I think the applicant did a good job giving you the history of the site, why they're here, and what the issue is, is that in that history, there was never any formal approvals. There's plenty of CCOs, plenty of administrative approvals, but we were lacking any type of variance approval or site plan approval. So, going through this, there was definitely a change in the tenant proposed at this time, and just because things have been done in the past isn't necessarily the way we have to do them in the future. So, looking at this, we haven't had any complaints about this property, about the businesses being run from here, that I'm aware of. Not to say one won't come in tomorrow after a new tenant takes ownership or starts operating. So, the issue at that time is if there's a valid complaint on the property and somebody gets into the uses, I don't think the property owner or the township, based on the history presented, was in any fair, safe standing as to being challenged in court. That's ultimately why we're here. We had looked at the evidence beforehand. I think there is good support here as to documentation way back into the 30s and 40s. As we know, I can't, as a zoning officer, authorize any nonconforming uses going forward unless that changes within a year. The ordinance has been agricultural, residential, with no commercial uses since our first ordinance, which is 1957. Seeing some of the things in the file, like going under the radar, having continuation of uses without understanding where the uses came from or when they started, I think has been a dangerous game that's been going on here. I think sitting here now, doing this process, legalizes what we're, what the owner is looking to do with the property, what the township has seen in the past. Based on the evidence presented, the township has no... Based on the evidence presented, the township has no objection going forward. I think the documentation back to the 30s and 40s should be given its due weight by the board and move on as you see fit.
Okay. Charles?
Yeah, Mike, I got a quick question. So on the survey that's provided, you have a fenced yard with six-foot-high fence and 25-foot pine trees. What is the use of that yard, is that in conjunction, previously it was probably with the fence business, you stored materials and equipment?
That's correct.
With the new use that you're going to bring in there, is there going to be any storage of equipment or materials in that back area?
We won't be storing bathtubs, but you know what, I can really use it, I've got tractors, I've got, for last year we did corn, and I've got a huge, I don't know what it's called, a hopper that holds corn. I've also spoken to one of the solar companies about putting in a solar field so I can reduce the electric use, but as far as bathtubs, we're not going to be storing bathtubs back there, we'll have a dumpster for trash.
When you say equipment, what kind of equipment are you talking about?
My farming equipment.
Okay.
For use on your property, right?
Yes.
For use with the farm operation, okay, so there's no, you know, subletting that space to a second contractor or anything like that?
No, 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 no. I have two of my boats parked there right now.
Okay.
If I'd rather put them at my home, I'd put them there.
And then as far as the parking, that's all going to be in the parking area located to the east?
We have lit, paved with lines, parking area.
So there's not going to be any parking behind in the contractor's storage area other than equipment for the farm use?
You know, I would rather they put, they have pickup trucks, I'd rather they put their pickup trucks in the back, out of sight, no one knows what's going on, you can't see it from the front, it's fenced in, but that's it.
It's a question for the board whether or not, I know in the past on some of the more heavily intensive commercial uses, we've had them park those on concrete pads or something more substantial so you're not getting diesel dripping out, would you have an issue with keeping those in the front so it's on a?
Parking the parking lot.
Okay.
We have a parking lot, ample spot.
Okay, and then is there any proposed signage with the application, is there any existing signage, you're just going to reconfigure it for the proposed use?
There are two signs out front, and they can just use the two signs, put their name on it, they don't need anything special.
Okay, and then as far as the general circulation for the commercial use, so you got like four separate driveways on the road there, is there any one that's dedicated specifically for the commercial use of the warehouse versus residential, just?
Driveway one and driveway four, it's a circle, it comes into the parking lot, out of the parking lot, and then to the warehouse. So if they get deliveries, the truck can come in the back where the back bay door is, make the delivery, take it off with a forklift, and put it in the building.
And most of the vehicles coming to the site are box trucks, that type of size vehicle?
Yeah, it's a small, like a yellow freight box truck type thing.
Okay.
It's only bathtubs that they'll be receiving.
Okay, and then outside, no storage of hazardous or chemical materials, okay?
There's no manufacturing of any kind, no chemicals, no...
That's all I have for them right now, Chairman.
Ms. Bell?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Any questions, further questions with the board? Yes.
I just want to understand, so the salesperson will go out to a client, and then the client and the salesperson will come back after a while and take a look at?
Not every time, but I'll give you the best example. So if you were thinking about redoing your bathroom, and you see on TV Bathfitter advertising, you go to the county fair and you get a little card from Bathfitter, salesman will come out to your house with samples, and they'll show you the colors, they'll show you the tile patterns and so on, but you might want to see on a larger display, gee, how will that look with the three-wall enclosure? At that time, you make an appointment, come into the warehouse, and he'll have bathtubs on display so you can see the colors, the patterns, if you want to see your quality, hit it, step on it.
Okay, so you think that had less traffic or more traffic than the fencing?
Oh, less, with the fencing, people came in to purchase parts, my gate broke, I need a hinge, no one goes down the road with their wife, hey, what are you saying, we buy a bathtub today, honey, I mean, yeah, you need a bathtub to stop it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Mr. Chairman, just a couple of, just maybe bookkeeping things. So Todd, based on your client's representation, the exhibits and everything else, it's your client's testimony, and you can confirm this, that the use has continued unbroken to present day, correct? In terms of the warehousing use, the light manufacturing and assembly use has continued on, has it never been abandoned, is what I'm getting at?
I think, I mean, you can read in one of the memos, I believe there was a small period of time in the 90s where the bank owned the property, but other than that, I wouldn't consider that abandoned, because it wasn't leased at that moment.
And you'd agree with me that the case law also supports the fact that that is not an abandonment, mere non-use, right?
Absolutely, but I just want to be 100% factually correct.
And I just wanted on the record that it's not this applicant's intention to abandon the use, in other words, he's thinking to continue the use which has been, as I understand it, unbroken ever since the 30s.
Absolutely.
Okay, that's it, that's all I have.
Any other questions in the board? Can I have a motion to open the public?
Motion to open.
Motion by Mr. Merton?
Second.
Second by Mr. O'Donnell, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Is there anyone in the audience wish to come forward, ask a question or make a statement? Come forward, please.
All witnesses have to be sworn.
Yes, sir.
How do you do? I do. William Smith. William Smith?
Thank you, sir.
I think everything here seems pretty reasonable, I live right behind there. My biggest concern is signage, which I think you addressed, and if everything that has been said is how it's going to go, that's fine. However, right next door to him, a couple of years ago, a 15-foot neon sign was put at the Our House Restaurant in the real estate office. Whoever approved that, it was a little silly, because that thing shines right in my backyard. I called the town, that's another issue, I understand, if it's allowed, it shouldn't be, but I want to make sure that's not happening here. That's all.
Any type of proposed signage, changes to the signage on site would have to come through my office for approval. As a non-conforming site, a neon site, an LED sign, anything bigger than that's there now would require to come back to the board for variance.
Okay.
And you would be noticed.
Yeah, so, yeah.
And they could change out what's there with the current size.
No problem. That's my only concern.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Mr. Orozco, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Todd, would you like to do a little summation, or?
Mr. Chairman, I think everything's been laid out pretty clear, a 75-year history of a commercial use of one type or another in the warehouse. I believe my clients were very clear as to the limited use of the type of tenant we're going to have, and we request a certificate of nonconformity based on those conditions.
Just to confirm one thing, because I want to be clear, as I'm the draftsman for the board, you're looking for something more, let's say expansive than just the potential user that's coming down the pipe. You're looking for a general sales, warehousing, light assembly use so that you're not back here every other year?
Showroom and office, yes.
I just wanted the board to understand that that's what your application is, not just for this specific user, that's what you're asking.
But also, we need to bring into question, you know, you're stating three salesmen and, you know, just a handful of people, what would be the maximum of people that would be part of this?
I would think that each different potential tenant would obviously have to get a CCO, and they'd have to make application to the land use department to get through that, and I think at a certain point, when Mr. Howard determined that this is not a small operation or not a four, because I mean, you can have three people, four people, five people, I don't think it's going to make a difference, but if you've got the seven to 10 people, yeah, that makes a difference. So I think that that cost be made by your land use officer, but...
Yeah, but that's part of the resolution. We need to kind of scope the resolution, you know, you're going to have a manufacturing or warehousing of a maximum of however many people. Yeah, well, that's the fence company that was there, and, you know, so, we, Mr. Howard's going to need something, you know, to go by to where he can see that the use is expanded.
I mean, not to expand 20 total employees or something?
I mean, there's a little bit of...
No, no, I understand, but that's what I'm saying.
There's a little bit of flexibility that always comes into any approval through my office, because this business is mostly with the employees going off-site, there isn't a lot, so even if they had 10 salesmen, they might not ever be on-site, so that's a little different, I don't want to put a hard number at like 10 versus 30 resident employees, which I think would overrun parking, and it comes into like what's available for parking, so 30 on-site employees would overrun that versus, you know, what we're facing with here today. So there is some gray area there, I'd be more comfortable on a case-by-case basis, maybe not to exceed 20 would, I think, be reasonable.
Okay, but I want something in the resolution that gives you a direction that we can deal with.
I think he said not to exceed 20, we could live with that.
If that's fair.
Board? Any further from the professionals?
Nope.
Any other questions from the board? What's the pleasure of the board?
I'd like to make a motion to approve this application, I'm very familiar with this property, I've been on it many times when the fence company was there, I was on it Saturday, reviewed it, and you've got plenty of park in there, and I don't see any problem, matter of fact, this would be inherently beneficial for the township residents to have this type of competition, because that type of business can be very expensive. So my recommendation is to approve the application as everything is agreed upon.
Second.
Second?
That was Mr. Massa?
Mr. Massa?
Yes.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Mr. Massa, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Massa?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Good luck.
Thank you very much, Mr. Thomas, evening.
Thank you.
Okay, next case on the agenda, case number BA 1804. Sean and Christine Conley construct a single-family dwelling with septic. Application of Sean and Christine Conley is applicant-owner seeking a bulk variance approval to construct two-story, single-family dwelling with the septic field on undeveloped lot along with the expansion of an existing shed and two-car detached garage on premises known as Block 41, Lot 32, Oakland Road, rear? I like rear?
Yes, there's no address.
Oh, it's the rear, okay. This application was originally scheduled for December 10th when it was carried to February 25th with no further notice. Expiration date, March 31st, 2019. Welcome.
Hi, hello. I do. Sure, I am Nicholas Dakotas, I am engineer representing the applicant.
My name is Sean Conley, owner of the property.
Okay, sir. What brings you here tonight?
Okay, bear with me, because this is not my typical area of expertise, but we're here to talk about the construction of a two-story, single-family home on Block 41, Lot 32, off of Oakland Road. The property has been in the applicant's family for a long time, it was originally purchased in 1942 by the applicant's grandfather, and then it was subsequently subdivided in 1961 and 1976 to give pieces to two of the applicant's relatives. So when the property was originally purchased, there was a single-family house that was in the northeast corner of the property, that house burned down, I think you said in the late 70s?
Yeah, about 79, I believe it was.
And since then, the applicant has inherited the property and wants to build a single-family house for his family to reside. The lot is landlocked and has no frontage, so the variances that we're seeking, the lot is undersized, it's 2.56 acres versus the six acres required, the lot width is less than 300 feet, the lot is on an unimproved street, and it's only a private roadway, there's no public right-of-way.
Now, is this a deed or right-of-way that's deeded to the property or not?
There is a, there is a, an easement on the south part of the property for a private roadway.
What about getting out to the main road?
The neighboring properties have an existing roadway that goes there now.
But do you have an easement to that, to use that?
I have that, we're in the middle of...
He's in the middle of getting his own agreement, but there are other properties that use that same accessway that have agreements in place with that property owner that owns the entrance off the roadway, and he's in the process of getting that together.
Okay, Mr. Hughes knows this very well.
Yes.
The board usually doesn't like to get involved in those type of agreements, because we've been in court over those agreements, Mr. Tropicki can advise us on that. How do we go about as far as the easements there, Mr. Tropicki?
If the board were to look favorably upon this application, the condition precedent would have to be an easement of some sort, or else this application has a fatal defect. I assume that, and again, I can't, not giving legal advice, because my role is to advise the board, but, you know, to avoid, as the chairman put it, a situation that we're all familiar with, I think we would need to know a little bit more, but I mean, that would certainly be a condition of approval, because without that, what do you have? You have a landlocked lot.
And, Mr. Tropicki, unless you can turn it into a flag lot?
Well, again, you know, that'll be up to the applicant to comply with that condition if in fact we get to that point.
Yeah, okay.
And, Mr. Chairman, just before we move forward, I know the engineer is, you know, putting an overview on the record, I'd like to get some credentials on the record, because we're starting to get into the testimonial aspects, and we really haven't heard of credentials yet. If you don't mind.
Your education, your background history, business history, professional history, please?
I attended Stevens Institute of Technology for an undergraduate degree in civil engineering, I have a master's degree in coastal structures from Stevens as well. I worked for Burt'sel Services Group between 2002 and 2013, I worked for Mazor Consulting between 2013 and 2017, and I am currently employed by Matrix New World Engineering, and I started working there in 2018, doing various, various engineering tasks. I was the appointed engineer for the Borough of Belmar for approximately a year and a half, I was the assistant engineer for the Township of Brick, so I have experience with municipal, municipal workings, it's just not usually from this side of the table.
Are you licensed engineer, state of New Jersey?
Yes, my license number is 47859.
That's okay. We accept your credentials. Okay. A lot of the reason they're here, Charles, is due to the flag lot, correct?
Yeah, so, uh, I think one of the major concerns, uh, that the fire bureau brought up was access for emergency vehicles. So it becomes very difficult to provide emergency access to a lot if you don't have an access easement to the roadway. Um, as Mr. Troply stated, uh, I don't know that that's grounds for the board to approve or deny just solely off of that. Um, it could certainly be a condition of the approval. You know, fire bureau typically requires twenty-foot-wide, um, uh, roadway with some sort of material that can support, uh, you know, a fire truck, and you need vertical clearance of thirteen and a half feet. I can tell you by looking at some of the photos that the applicant provided, you know, it's in a wooded area. So, um, whether the board makes a condition for the applicant having to acquire an easement to access this property for fire and emergency vehicles, I think the question becomes, are they just improving the access easement on their property? Or are they then required to improve the access easement all the way to both roadways to ensure that fire, you know, um, ambulance can get to the lot to service it in the need of, you know, in the event of an emergency?
Well, see, that, that's what Mr. Troply and I were talking about earlier, was that we like not to have to get into those discussions and requirements because we've been down that road before. And one of our board members has been the root of that problem before. And, you know, we really, I don't know how to proceed really unless it's a, you're gonna have to prove that you have access to the back property, you know, before any construction or anything could happen, if it was looked favorable at the board, you know. Um, as far as requiring the applicant to do construction all the way out to the roadway, I don't know if this board has a jurisdiction. I know we tried before, and, you know, it, it was a disaster, quite frankly. Yes, sir?
Thank you. Did I hear correctly that there are other adjacent property owners that are using this access route?
Yes, you did, sir.
What type of arrangements did they have?
Uh, they had an arrangement with the previous owner, uh, of the property that does have frontage to the pavement of Oakland Road, and they were granted, uh, a deed of easement.
So they did get an easement?
They did, yes.
Is there any reason to believe that? You wouldn't get an easement?
Uh, there is no reason to believe that because the current owner of that same particular property already has given me verbal permission, and he told me to go ahead and draft up, uh, something of the like, and he would sign it and get it notarized so that I could submit it to, to you.
So if the board said you had, you had to get a, an easement, you feel that you could get it?
I would have no problem. I'm in the middle of doing that as we speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
But, Mr. Massa, what, what the issue is though, is he's gonna require fire approvals. You know, that's outside agencies' approval. Okay, if the fire department says that the easement can't handle a fire truck, who's responsible for putting that road in to handle that fire truck all the way back out to the main?
I'm only asking you about the easement.
No, I, I understand, but see here-
Fire is a different issue.
Well, this is the dilemma where we're at, is because Mr., this happened to Mr. Hughes before. Um, and-
I don't know.
You know, you could be taught, this gentleman could be looking at paving, you know, a thousand foot of roadway, out to a roadway, you know, that's already got easements that there's no proper wave, you know?
Is this a township? This is not a township road, that car. See, that was a little bit difference with mine was it was, yeah.
Yours was an unpaved, you know, unimproved road.
But same concept.
Same concept, though.
Yeah, yeah.
I think he has to resolve his issue with the fire department.
Well, it, that's our issue. That's our issue at this point in time. Because if we approve this, it's gonna be based on certain restrictions, and it's gonna be in the resolution that certain things has to be done. Now, is there an unfair burden on this flag lot? That he has to improve the road all the way back out? It could, very well could be for him to buil, build a house. That's what we're trying to address right now, is to figure out how we can do this, you know, i- if we look favorable on this application. Because you got, you got snow plowing involved, you got all, a whole slew of other different things.
Does the township plow private roads?
No, no, this is a private, this is a private roadway.
Even, uh, when with mine, I plowed too.
No, I don't.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
So, we have a ARE six zoning here. This is an undersized lot. My question is, in looking, what causes this lot to be landlocked? Are those also all undersized lots that are surrounding this particular piece of property? Are they unimproved? Or are they, are they just wooded lots? What are we looking at here?
If, if you see, I, I pulled up the, um, the key map from the, from the plan provided. There are a number of undersized and-
There's no improvements around it?
There's, there's a number of lots here that are undersized and not fronting on an improved street. So there's other, there's others in the area, yes.
And they're improved lots, you're saying?
Uh, some are, uh, I believe some are vacant, and there are houses on two or three.
And they have septic and well, each and every one of those?
I assume so. I, I don't know off the top of my head.
I could tell you that immediately to the south of, uh, our property in question, there's a, a house right there that has a well.
Yes, and then, sir, to, there's a lot in between her property, and then there's another house there that has septic and well also. And then there's another house at the other end of the dirt lane that, uh, is a newer house, probably maybe ten years old.
And those are all off the same, unimproved, uh, like, uh, the same private road?
That, that is a dirt lane into there, correct?
It is, sir. There's four houses going from Oakland Road through this dirt lane that exits on Victory Road.
Okay, so that, that's a through road?
It's a through road. Uh, fire trucks were in, in through there probably, I don't know, maybe a few months ago for my neighbor that's directly across from my properties. There were three, like, big fire rigs, the big rigs.
Now, do they, okay, so that, that's a through road. Now, is there an easement on the other side, or how, how do you get access to Victory?
You just drive, you can come in from Oakland Road, from either side on Oakland Road, turn down this dirt lane, and then you can just drive all the way through this.
I know, but is there an easement, once you pass your property?
Yes.
Is there an easement out to Victory on that roadway?
I couldn't tell you. I, I don't know what each property owner has going on.
I, I understand, but see, what, the, uh-
So, Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the applicant.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Conley, so when you say, uh, you've already spoken with your adjoining property owner about, uh, possibility of acquiring an easement, which property in specific are you, are you talking about? Is it to the west of you?
Yeah.
Yes.
What lot number is that?
Oh, what is it?
Lot thirty-three and-
Thirty-three and-
Forty-one oh one.
He owns both of these, right?
No, it'd be this right here. It'd be lot thirty-two oh one would be the residence that, uh-
I don't know. This, this one.
Oh, that's Carlos. I thought he was talking about.
Where, where the road goes through?
Uh, where the road, it'd be, um, thirty-two, lot thirty-two. That's the one that has the frontage to Oakland Road. Is that the question?
Lot, so wait, you're saying lot?
Thirty-three. You're thirty-two.
Uh, yeah. Thirty, thirty-three, I'm sorry, sure, thirty-three.
And does that not also cross lot forty-one oh one to get to Oakland Road there?
Yeah, he owns, he owns this also, correct?
So he owns both of those property, okay. So, I think the, the primary concern is fire access. Um, you know, obviously the applicant says that they have spoken with the neighbor. They think they can get an easement off of Oakland Road. Obviously, for the fire company, it's more ideal for them to come on and pull straight through, you know, out to Victory Road. If the applicant can't acquire an easement going all the way to Victory Road, if the applicant would be willing to provide some type of stabilized turnaround on their property and dedicate that as like an access easement for fire purposes, that may possibly, uh, resolve some concerns with access for fire and emergency vehicles. Um, you know, the twenty-foot wide isn't for turnarounds for emergency vehicles. It's just so if you have an ambulance coming in one direction and a fire truck coming in the other direction, you know, they can get past each other. So, I think, you know, providing a turnaround might ease some of the, you know, fire concerns. As far as the, uh, makeup of the roadway or the easement, you're proposing DGA. Do you have any, like, thickness for that or any descriptions on that?
Yeah, we were, we were thinking six inches of DGA. Um, just because, you know, the whole idea of what we're trying to propose here is kind of low impact. Um, you know, we're not trying to put down a lot of pavement. Uh, we're not trying to take out a lot of trees. Uh, so we felt that DGA would be something that would easily support the load of a, a truck, but not really be, um, you know, like, a hard surface.
Now, the existing roadway that's out there, what is the makeup of that? Is it gravel?
It's, uh, it's millings and, uh, and just, like, bare soil.
Okay. But that's been in existence since there was a residence on the property since nineteen seventy-five. So it's had some traffic on it. So I would say if the applicant is willing to stabilize the, um, roadway with DGA, I would say a minimum of six inches thickness. Um, that might help ease the concerns of the fire company with getting access out there. Once that's-
How far does he have to do that, though?
That's, yeah, that's the tricky situation, whether or not he has to go all the way out to the roadway or not.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I kind of feel that to proceed with this case without an easement and an approval of the fire department, we shouldn't. He should get that first and then come back, and we don't have to worry about that, because that will be out of the way, and anything else that needs to be out of the way. Because I don't see how we could give him approval, uh, without that.
Well, not only that, I think it's gonna affect the design. You know, because i- if he can't get an easement going out to Victory Road, then he's gotta get, get a turn, there's gonna have to be a turnaround.
It's gonna eat up on, on some of the square footage of the property, yes. And then it's gonna have to redesign. It's gonna push it further back.
How about Victory, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Can you get a, uh, something on Victory to help you out?
Well, I could say this for sure. Um, there is, on the very end of this dirt lane that exits onto Victory, I could talk to the neighbor there and ask him if he can cooperate with me, with me. I'm friendly with him, so I, I don't think that there'd be an issue with that. Then to, uh, the property that shoulders up to him, i- it's his in-laws that have passed away, and it, the property is, is vacant at the moment. So he, I don't think he owns it. I think one of his, uh, in-laws own it, and I don't know how to get in touch with them, but I'm sure that they might be able to. So I know that I'd probably would have a good chance with the guy at the very end of Victory. Uh, and then there's another land, there's another owner that puts up to my property shoulder, and the, uh, the vacant property that lives on Victory Road, I could introduce myself to him and, and, you know, let him know what my situation is, and maybe he could sympathize with me and work something out with, uh, with an easement.
Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I would tend to agree with Mr. O'Donnell. I think we need to get these issues resolved and then come back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I concur. I mean, due diligence has to be done by the applicant before we could even consider the rest of the, the situation.
I would agree too. Being through it myself, I would say that that's absolutely-
Are you hearing the sentiments from the board?
Yeah.
I, I think, I think you really need to go seek out those easements, and then come back to the board. And I'm gonna ask our legal opinion here, and from our professionals here, I'd like to hear from them.
Obviously, Charlie has more to say than I do, but speaking in terms of what the chair has brought up with the other matter involving Mr. Hughes, which was not exactly on all fours with this, I think a couple of things, and again, I think the board could look very favorably on this application, but the problem is that we have an access way which has not really beyond a reasonable doubt been determined tonight. So the board really doesn't know what they're looking at. And secondly, I think our board engineer would have several comments, including the turnaround, and I'm sure that he would like to see a, you know, something on the site plan, because as had been mentioned before, this really could impact site development. So I think for those two reasons, I, I tend to see and agree with the board that perhaps it should be tabled for now. But rather than waste the applicant's time further, what I would ask the chair to do is to let Charlie, as we have done in the past, put a laundry list of things together that he sees as problematic, so that as they work through this with the fire department and present a sketch to the fire department and perhaps for approval, they can knock out some of the technical requirements that Charlie has listed, so that the applicant's time tonight is well-spent. That would be my opinion.
Okay.
Charlie?
Yeah, no, I, I agree completely, Mr. Troply. Um, a lot of the comments that I have are just straight from the letter, and they've been comments that have been on there since the initial review letter. Um, so just to start off with the list of it. So you got, uh, the fencing on the property. Is that all existing? Is that all proposed?
Proposed.
It's all proposed. Do, do you have any details for the makeup of the fence? Because you have some portions of it extending into a front yard. The town's got an ordinance. It's gotta be no greater than four foot in height, fifty percent open. Um, obviously have that prepared next time you come before the board. Um, you have on the eastern side of a property, you have the proposed, proposed fencing almost going all the way across to the southern property line there, across your driveway. Is there gonna be a gate on there? Um, if you were able to get an access easement all the way across to Victory Road, the fire company would usually require that to have a knock box on there, so, um, they can get access if, uh, you know, it's, it's got a lock on it. Um, the applicant has provided some wetlands delineation and, um, you know, some, some buffers on there. There's a fifty-foot buffer along the northwest corner of the property. Um, they've also delineated a secondary wetlands area that has a hundred and fifty-foot buffer that extends on the northeast corner of the property. Um, typically what the board requires is, uh, an LOY as a condition of their approval, just verifying those buffers. I will say you have an existing shed, um, that you're saying you're proposing to expand on an existing foundation. Um, that's gonna be highly dependent on whether or not DEP is gonna give you any approval to build on that. My recommendation to you would be demolish it and put in a new shed that's not within the wetlands buffer to completely resolve that issue, um, because that's just gonna be another hurdle that you have to jump through. But, um, you know, that's your decision. With the access easement, I just note for the applicant's benefit, um, you know, it is an access easement. It's gonna be the owner's responsibility to maintain it, to snowplow it. Um, it's not a public road or public right-of-way. You know, it's, it's gonna be your responsibility to maintain that for emergency access. Um, you know, just be prepared to provide testimony. I will say you have a, a single-family dwelling with what appears to be a two-car garage, and then you're having a, a secondary building to the east side of the property that's also a two-car garage. You know, what's the, what's the use? What's the need? You know, is it just associated for the applicant's residential use, you know, um, or is there any commercial, you know, sometimes people put those in and they operate a, you know, garage out of there and start doing mechanic work. So, um, you know, have that ready to provide testimony to the applicant. Um, those are the, the line share, the, the big items that I see, Mr. Chairman. I'll, you know, defer to the, uh, the planner at, at this point.
Ms. Bell?
As it's been stated, I think the access is really just the biggest issue with the property, you know, you need to be able to access the property.
Ms. Spiro, you've been very quiet over there. Do you have any comments as far as tree clearing and anything else in here?
I don't, uh, uh, yeah, I mean, for the asset, tree clearing, I have to submit a permit.
Okay. The, the other thing that I would bring up is whenever you figure your, your roadway improvements and things, kind of get, take some grade elevations and things like that, uh, sort of like the drainage, how, how is that, the roadway gonna drain, you know? What's gonna happen with the water? I, I noticed the wetlands, so I, I'm pretty sure it drains towards the wetlands.
Yeah.
Uh, are you draining, i- is the roadway gonna shed water across somebody else's property? You know, how is that gonna be dealt with?
And then, Mr. Chairman, the utilities, how are the utilities gonna enter the property, right?
Uh, there's no, uh, the only thing is probably JCP and L, because this is septic, correct?
Yes.
Water well, correct?
Correct.
And then you got JCP and L and cable.
There's existing poles out there servicing the houses right across from my property, and there's an existing- And there's an existing telephone poles on my property from my grandfather's house that existed. So there's poles there already to bring in electric.
Did that answer your question?
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could just jump back in with two quick things. So, um, while you're on topic of, uh, utilities, Mr. Sayes. So, uh, the septic system, what I would recommend to you before you're coming before the next time, um, Monmouth County Board of Health already issued a report about the proposed septic design, having to do soil test pits and things like that.
Yeah.
If you can have that thing, all that stuff squared away before you're coming to the board next time. Um, you know, it's, it's not a condition of the approval. You know, it's a settled matter before, uh, you know, you're being heard by the board. And I will note that dry well to the northeast of your, uh, single-family dwelling, um, you know, Monmouth County Board of Health will probably catch up on this, but it's within 50 feet of your septic disposal fee, uh, field. You have to have 50-foot separation. So-
Okay.
I think you have ample space to relocate that, but-
Yeah.
Another thing to address before you come back before the board.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I just want to, um, ask the applicant or the engineer, um, how much time do you think you'll need? I mean, we've given you quite a laundry list here. Uh, we would be probably looking to schedule this at the earliest sometime in April. Uh, is that not time enough for you? Probably is not from what I'm hearing. Um, because, you know, remember everything has to come in 10 days beforehand.
Yeah.
Do you want us to look towards May? Is that, cause March 1st is next Friday.
Yeah, I would say May for sure, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, May would be fine.
Okay. And if that's the case, I'll ask Eileen to take a look at our schedule. I, would you, um, I'm gonna ask, and Nick, you know what I mean, an extension of time until May 30th. I'm sure you'd extend on behalf of your client.
Yes, we'd like to-
Okay, for the board to act on the case. Okay.
I have May 13th, which has two applications already scheduled, or May 20th right now is clear with nothing.
I'll go with May 20th, please.
May 20th?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, we don't have any other case on May 20th?
Right.
Okay, is there any other questions or any other items that the board would like to see addressed the next time they come back to the board?
I think if he addresses what we asked him to, you know, we could proceed with the project and, uh, you know, look at it favorably because we don't have to worry about the, uh, him getting in and out. And we have the other approvals.
And then ample, is there ample street lighting required on the right of way?
Not on this.
No, right.
Charles, there, there wouldn't be any requirement of street lighting in here?
No, no, I wouldn't think so.
Okay. Okay. Any other? Okay, sir.
Okay.
Sir, yeah, I'm gonna, case number BA 1804, Sean and Christina Conley. This case will be carried to May 20th with no further notice, 7:30 PM. We will need an extension of time.
Granted through May 30th, not, or 31st.
May 31st, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, I had a question. Uh, I have three, uh, neighboring properties that shoulder my property to Victory Road, uh, Township Road. Let's say hypothetically, I'm only able to get two out of the three and not all three. Like, I, I don't know how I'm gonna be able to deal with the people that have passed away.
Well, it should be an estate set up.
I understand that. I'll do my best to, to make contact, reach out and reach them, you know, in whatever capacity I can.
But see, that, that's why we're telling you there, you might, if, if you can't get that access, you have to have a through access. It just can't be two properties and then one, a, a property in the middle.
All right, I understand.
You, you, it, that, that's why we're saying you might have to put a turnaround in there. I hate to say that.
That would be the alternative if I can't get all three.
Exactly.
All right, I, I clearly understand.
Because you can get one side, but you can't, if you can't get the whole through, then you're gonna have to do a turnaround there. At least provide something. Later on, you might be able to get that, you know, the whole through.
Sure.
And then they could use that.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the, you know, this is not a recommendation, it might just be a suggestion. If it goes that route and you can't get an access easement all the way through, you're proposing a garage on the east side of the property there, you're gonna need some type of driveway for that. If you can work your turnaround into that driveway, you're killing two birds with one stone.
Yep. Yeah, they, it, it's gonna have to take something if you can't get that through. You know, so, you know, you got a smart engineer.
I'll do my best.
He'll figure it out. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, at this time, the board's gonna take a 10-minute recess. We'll, or make it 15 minutes. We'll be back at nine o'clock.
The zoning board will now reconvene.
Okay, next case on the agenda, case number BA 18 dash 30, 6601 Highway 9 Associates LLC. Use variance preliminary and final major site plan. Applicant of 6601 Highway 9 Associates LLC is applicant and owner seeking a use variance and preliminary and final major site plan approval to convert an existing retail building into a retail men's clothing store. Construct a one-story 14,052 square foot warehouse to the, to be utilized in conjunction with the clothing store. Extend the asphalt parking lot, add parking spaces in a loading space, concrete walkways in a detention infiltration basin on premises known as Block 25, Lot 16, 6601 US Highway 9 North. Expiration date, April 13th, 2019. Mr. Pape.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, board professional staff and public, good evening all. Kenneth Pape of the firm Heilbrun Pape with the privilege and responsibility of representing your applicant this evening. Mr. Chair, if before we begin our substantive presentation, if your attorney or secretary could confirm receipt of our notices and confirm that the board has jurisdiction.
So noted.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is an application that has really two purposes. One is a repurposing of an existing retail building. There's a building on Route 9, it's a handsome building on Route 9. It hasn't been used for some time. It was in its last iteration, I think it was a mattress store, and before that it was a furniture store, but it, it's vacant. And the, uh, our client who is here tonight, David Rappaport, uh, operates the Emporio Men's Store. It's already here. It's on, on Route 9, across the street, a little bit further south. And he, he's been there for 10 years as a, a tenant. This is a property that became available and he has purchased it with the goal of re-establishing his business in this new, in this building and to, uh, revitalize it. The second request is why we're here in front of the zoning board. The second request is to introduce a storage building behind the retail building. The 15,000 square foot retail building will be entirely retail. It will be a single-purpose men's store. That, um, requires no approval by this board. And in fact, Mr. Howard and the township's professionals have approved that use of that building, subject to tying into sewer and water service, which they're currently working on. The second building is a storage building. And a storage building would be for the storage of clothing. Mr. Rappaport is asking if he can have a, a building that where he stores only the clothing that he sells. No secondary purpose, no tenants, no other use. Mr. Rappaport has five stores in the New York, New Jersey area. This would be the only storage building. So it would service the, this building as well as the others, but it would be exclusively for his business.
Well, this, well, I, I'm gonna, this is a warehouse, right?
Yes.
Warehouse, not storage.
Oh, oh, it's a warehouse.
Warehouse, it'd be shipping and receiving into that warehouse, correct?
It will be, it'll be receiving of clothing that would then be primarily sold from this building, but also sold from his other buildings.
It'd be shipped from there to the other stores?
He has vans which, which would move it around.
Correct.
Correct. The, you'll also hear that the entire site is, is proposed to be cleaned up. All new parking lots, a stormwater system where there isn't a stormwater system, a substantial landscape system where there isn't a, um, substantial landscape system. And the, the signage in the front of the building and the building all being, uh, freshened. Application, um, is that of Mr. David Rappaport. Mr. Rappaport is seated, is standing, Mr. Rappaport is your applicant. He is the owner of the building and Emporio is his business. Seated, seated alongside of Ms. Louis Zugner, who is a professional engineer and is responsible for the plans that are before you. And to assist in the presentation, Scott Kennel, our traffic expert, who was with us throughout the design of the facility. Also, Mr. Gillis, Mr. Tom Gillis, who is an, an architect, is here. I didn't intend to call him unless the board has questions of him. I, uh, addressed the architect.
I, I think there is a few questions for him.
Great.
So, why don't we bring all your witnesses forward and we'll go ahead and swear everybody in.
And Christine Caphone is our planner. So if all will come forward, we'll get them sworn in.
Thomas Gillis, G.I.L.L.I.S., 11 Billingsport Drive, Sycroville, New Jersey.
Scott Kennel, K.E.N.N.E.L. with McDonough and Ray Associates.
Christine Nizarro Caphone, N.A.Z.Z.A.R.O. Caphone, C.O. Assistant Frank, O.N.E. Caphone Consulting Group.
Thank you.
Louis Zugner, Z.U.E.G.N.E.R. I'm with Mid-Atlantic Engineering.
Very good. Thank you. Almost sworn, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you. With your permission, we'll begin with Mr. Zugner. I've asked that he have exhibits sufficient that we can bring everybody to the property and then focus on the revisions to the site that are proposed. So if we could ask, uh, Mr. Zugner, if you would share with us your professional and educational background.
Certainly, yeah. I'm a founding principal of Mid-Atlantic Engineering. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey as well as several other states. A graduate of Virginia Tech. I've been practicing, uh, since 1994. And I've testified before planning and zoning boards across the state of New Jersey, many here in this county, although not in front of this particular board.
Accept your credentials.
Thank you. Mr. Zugner, I'm gonna ask if you could-
It's on.
If you could introduce to the board the exhibits that you have prepared. We'll take a few moments to label them and then we'll go right into your testimony.
Very good. Ken, your next marking would be A19. Then our, our secretary will come down and, uh, initial the board.
Thank you.
For you.
Thank you.
Please finish, if we could have a description, please.
And Mr. Zugner, you have to hold that right up.
If you could, we'll, we'll do them all at once, okay? So A20, we'll do, we'll label them, A19, A20, A21.
Let's take care of them all now. A19, um, and then we have A20.
Yeah.
And A21, Ken, you said?
Eight, up to 21, yes.
Very well. And then we'll take a description on each. Thanks.
Thank you. So if you could just, I guess, a title block and a date from the, the plan and then a narrative description of what each is. A19 to begin.
So A19, the, the first board that we'll work with, it's labeled Emporio Men's Store Property Boundary. And this is, is what I'll call a regional aerial showing the property and its surroundings. I'll come back and describe it a little further, but just for the initial piece. A20, uh, this is aerial exhibit. This is now a similar plan, but closer in and rendering the site, showing the proposed new buildings and the existing buildings. And then finally, A21, uh, simply entitled Emporio Men's Store. Uh, and this is a close-up, uh, composite of all the plans that were submitted to you, uh, but shown colored or rendered, uh, for presentation. All of them are dated 2/25/19.
Perhaps beginning with A19, the one that has the, the furthest up in the sky, identify the property's location and just a brief description of the surrounding uses.
So hopefully everyone can see. Uh, there's a yellow line. This is the property boundary. Of course, labeled Lot 16, which is our property, that also addresses 6601 Route 9. Route 9 runs across the bottom of this plan, so south is to your right. And, uh, we are about, um, three quarters, about three quarters of a mile south of Lane's Mill, this location. So the intersection you can see at the bottom right-hand corner is the Alexander Avenue Jug Handle. So hopefully everyone's familiar in terms of location. And you can see, of course, with the aerial that's taken, uh, the existing building, which is up front towards Route 9. There's parking around the, that building. And then the rear of the property is wooded and goes into undeveloped property behind us. And you can see, of course, along Route 9 predominantly, uh, similar retail development.
With one exception, and let's point out that one exception.
Lot 15, which is just to our south, immediately to our south, is a single-family residential property.
You could then move to A20 where things become a little clearer and-
You said Lot 15 is a single-family house, correct?
It is, yes.
So now on, on board A20, and it's the same alignment with Route 9 across the bottom, south to the right. You can see in sort of a, uh, I'll call it a burnt orange color, the square now, which you'd seen in the aerial before, that's the existing retail building. Building, uh, Mr. Pape described to you before, it's been there, it had some prior purposes, it's always retail. That building is, uh, one-story and 15,035 square.
Okay. A question to you, that, that, the drive aisles on the existing building, are they, that, that loop around the building, is that existing now?
So, I don't know if you can see a color differentiation, but essentially to the proposed building, this warehouse building in the back, that's all paved now. And so that building's gonna sit basically at the back, uh, where the existing paving ends.
Okay.
We're gonna reconstruct the paving. Parking there needs work. Uh, we're gonna do some work to this front island to create better circulation. Parking in front of the retail building, obviously getting parking directly in front of the entrance is important. Uh, and then as we go to the back, you can see, get a slightly different orange color, but similar. That's the proposed warehouse building, thinking your opening you had mentioned, but that is 14,052 square feet, slightly smaller, um, also a single story. And then we bring parking around the back of that as well.
Okay, but my question, there's existing paving around the existing building, correct?
Correct, yes.
It's in place now?
Correct.
Okay. There, there's a reason for me asking that because of the set, you know, it, that's an existing condition, correct?
Yes.
My question to the engineer would be, as far as giving a setback, you're gonna have a setback that's required for the new building. Am I correct for the residential property?
Yeah, so, uh, along the southern side of the property, there is a 50-foot residential buffer that's required. Um, as the board is aware, we've been, um, measuring the principal setbacks from that buffer. So the applicant is requesting relief from, uh, you know, essentially having a zero side yard set, or side yard setback to the south, uh, from that residential buffer. Um-
But would that be a 50-foot on existing, something that's existing? Or is that just the new building?
I would think it would just be on the new building.
Okay, it looks like they're giving a 50-foot buffer to the existing building, correct?
They've shown it on there. Um, you know, the existing driveway, they're not changing anything with the configuration on the south side of that existing building.
Which that's existing.
It's existing. So, uh, you know, I wouldn't take any exception to that, you know, cause they're not doing any changing with the width of it or anything like that. The only improvements that they're doing is, uh, I don't know if any of the board members have been out there. The pavement is in pretty poor condition. Uh, that was one of our suggestions in our review letter. They've since come back and they're going to reconstruct the entire parking lot, existing parking lot to the front building. So I, I wouldn't take any exception to that being that it is-
But would they still need relief?
No.
For the 50-foot if it's a pre-existing condition?
No, they would not.
So technically, they're not needing a setback?
No, it would just be for the warehouse in the rear of the property.
But that, that wouldn't require the, the variance, would it? If they're giving you a 50-foot?
It would require because it's a new building.
Now, Mr. Chairman, the 50-foot buffer is in place.
Correct.
But your ordinance suggests that in addition to the 50-foot buffer, there should be an additional 25 feet separation.
That, that's where I was getting-
We accomplished the 50-foot buffer. We accomplished the 50-foot buffer, we accomplished the landscape elements, you'll hear that we agree with all of Ms. Spiro's recommendations, but we don't have that extra 25 feet.
That's where I was coming, trying to get to.
Yeah, and just to add another comment to that, so they are proposing landscaping within the buffer there. As the board is aware, the 50-foot four-season buffer is a combination, two of the three, plantings, berms, and a fence. It's only one of the three, so technically they're still not meeting the full intent of the ordinance there.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Sorry to...
No, I appreciate it.
I just wanted to get that clear.
I appreciate it. I think, if we go to A-21, which is the clearest, closest view, I'm going to ask if you could just do a narrative overview, just a couple of sentences, narrative overview of the site improvements. Then we'll go through each of the statutory elements for the board's edification.
So again, the existing retail building, you can see here, similar to the prior plan, had various previous retail uses. We make use of the existing parking, we add parking and circulation around the proposed warehouse building behind it, and we try and achieve, we'll talk about buffers and drainage and some other elements.
The chairman has assisted us very nicely in pointing out existing conditions. We've got a driveway, an ingress driveway on one side of the building, we have a two-way driveway on the other side of the building, and we have an existing building. Those are existing conditions. Highlight them for the board, please.
Certainly. So you can see at the bottom, there are two existing entrances from Route 9 into the site. There's width for one-way circulation to the south of the building. Remainder of all of our drive aisles are two-way traffic, all 90-degree parking spaces. And you see off to the left here, this is where trash enclosure would be provided for the two buildings. You can see at the front of this building, sort of light striping, this is the combined loading, we'll talk about that in a moment, but the loading for both of the buildings. And then in a lighter yellow color, that's where the stormwater will be at the back of the site.
So, general overall improvements are an all-new parking facility, landscape enhancements, and a stormwater system where there currently is no stormwater management at the site.
That's correct.
I'm going to ask if you could take us through some of the statutory elements. The easiest one, I think, for us to talk about, and we'll start with it, is grading. Is there any substantial or mentionable grading?
So the grading on this site mimics the existing condition. There's no large amount of soil being moved, it's a balanced site. At the very front of the property drains towards Route 9, but most of it drains to the back and the basin.
You're maintaining that grading pattern?
Not the same as it is now and very similar to surrounding properties.
Stormwater, there's two very important points that I'd like you to make. And one is that if you could briefly describe the stormwater system that you're introducing, and then if you could confirm that your stormwater system will comply with the DEP and the township stormwater management requirements.
So I think first, we talked before about this building and paving, there is no stormwater measure or control on the property at the moment. There's no basin and nothing to control stormwater. When we're finished, we have the basin at the back that will treat water quality for the low-level, small storms, will retain water through the required regulatory storms to 10 and 100-year storm, and we will meet all of the requirements, both for the municipality and for NJBD.
There's, and the staff report says, asks that you confirm, that's a private system, the responsibility of maintaining that is the property owners, but there's oversight by the municipality in the event that the property owner fails to maintain the system. All of that would be in the operations manual that you draft?
Correct. We drafted a manual, it will actually be filed with the property on how you maintain it, that will be the responsibility of the property owner.
And the all cost and expense of that system is the property owners.
Correct.
Would you describe the circulation? Now, Mr. Kennel's going to be here to do a little bit more after you, but if you could just generally describe the circulation on-site.
So we talked a little bit about the directions and you can see the arrows on our plan. Other than the one-way aisle to the south of the building, everything's two-way traffic, which obviously simplifies things in terms of knowing where you're going. All perpendicular parking. At the rear of the warehouse building, this will most likely be employee parking. You can see in a lighter color around the warehouse building, throughout the site, there are some areas of concrete for walkways. And again, we do provide the one loading area, two loading areas required based on two buildings, but given our use with the combined buildings, we think one is appropriate and it's well situated between the two buildings. I think there'd been a little bit of, you know, question about in terms of coming in and out of this site. The travel demand is quite low, it's three to four trucks per month is the magnitude of vehicles bringing materials in and out. The rest is what you'd see at any store, FedEx delivery, a little Sprinter van that moves clothing around from store to store.
I would like to point out, I think that some of the board members may know, I make it a point to meet with Chief Lewis on every application before we come before you to make certain that we have his concerns. I'm very pleased that he recently wrote a letter confirming that we did meet and that he was satisfied with the design. He made some very specific requirements as to where fire hydrants were to be located and where the Siamese connection on the building would be located, all of which we found to be agreeable and so advised him. But he indicated that the circulations in his memo, that he was satisfied with the circulation.
Maybe I could touch on parking numbers. Excuse me. So the existing site retail building has 28 parking spaces. We're proposing an additional 40, so we will have 68 parking spaces. This does require relief, the total required by ordinance is 104. I would note, though, we're proposing this new building, the warehouse requirement really adds no parking requirement, it adds three spaces to the calculation. So all of the required parking comes from the retail, and I, again, sort of stress that there are 28 spaces for this whole retail building now, we'll have 68 when we're done. So we think that's a pretty significant improvement, given the, you know, how we've laid it out.
And Mr. Kennel will point out, for this specialty use in this single-purpose building, we are very confident that we have more than ample parking.
Charles?
Yeah, I think Ken summarized that correctly, they do need a variance, they're above 20% exceeding the parking requirement, so they do need a variance, it's not just a straight waiver. You know, the warehouse use is going to be very minimal, three parking spaces. I think Ken needs to, when he gets to the owner, talk about the operation of the site, hours of operation, how many visitors are expected on a daily basis, you know, so the board can make an informed decision whether or not the proposed parking is adequate for the site.
Does it seem to be adequate to you?
Based on some of the meetings that I've had with Ken, I would say that for the intensity of the use, I think it would be adequate. The retail that they're proposing would be more maybe akin to like a, you know, a commercial shopping center, like a Target or something like that, where you're parking them in is a lot higher. But like I said, I'd like to still get on the record all the hours of operation, how many visitors are expected, you know, for the boards, you know, to make an informed decision on that.
Okay, thank you.
You could describe the landscaping plan, and there's important elements of landscaping. If you could talk about the landscaping along the front of the building, the landscaping on the side of the building, and the landscaping around the stormwater system.
So certainly, when it comes to landscaping and when you're dealing with existing conditions, the building and parking, there are always certain things you have to work around, and the goal is to create an aesthetic improvement to the site. And like Ken had asked or mentioned here, we achieved some landscaping at the very front of the retail and along the front edge of the property, trying to sort of improve and frame the retail building. By no means are we buffering, we're getting landscaping around the entirety of the building, and that's based on the existing condition we're dealing with. We are seeking islands out within the parking to add landscaping where we can. And then we focused most of our plantings into what was described before, but the 50 feet that separates that warehouse from the residential property to the south, that's where we proposed our most significant landscaping. And again, some at the rear.
There is a landscape report that was authored by Shari Spiro dated February 21st. It has, in paragraphs two and three, identifies variance relief that the applicant is requesting. I'd like to go through that. And then there's recommendations or technical comments, and together you and I can say we'll comply to each of those. But if we could just go through the first page of the February 21st report, "A required buffer between residential and commercial uses shall contain a 50-foot wide four-season buffer with landscaping 10 feet high and a berm 6 feet high. Currently, the applicant is proposing a mix of evergreen and deciduous trees and shrubs along the south side of the proposed warehouse. However, this does not comply with the requirements." But first, I'd like to indicate that to the extent that there's comments and direction for additional landscaping in that area, we find Ms. Spiro's recommendations to be acceptable without any exception. And second, if installing a fence along that common property line with the residential property was a request to the board, is there an opportunity to do so?
Certainly, there's space where we could add fencing or other landscaping in terms of this 50-foot buffer. I think that having created the 50 feet to the property line, plus the other existing vegetation, I don't know that fence is necessarily changing that depth and aspect, but it certainly could be fit in.
What's your recommendation, Ms. Spiro?
I mean, they are proposing a reasonable amount of landscaping over there. I did make some comments asking for it to be shifted around, just to help buffer better. But there are some, you know, oak trees over there, and some of them sit right on the property line that, you know, it's possible a fence could disturb it, you'd have to move it, you know, into the buffer a little bit, that you wouldn't be able to put it on the line.
Right. Would your recommendation be a fence there or no?
I don't know, if you have a fence, you're not going to see any of that landscaping for a good while. And it would, you know, make it pretty tight because the landscaping is close to the building also.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, if anything, I think I'd like to see a little bit more, you know, plant material if you feel it's necessary.
And, Mr. Chairman, and with them complying with the 10-foot should help, right?
One point I wanted to make, we do have the only residence on the highway as our neighbor, but if you, you can see where the new building is proposed, I want to just focus on where the residence is. So if you can just point out to the board members the actual location of the residential structure.
So the residential structure is sort of central in this area, I'm sorry, right above where it says Lot 15. Can't really see it with the trees in there.
So that landscaping that we're proposing is meeting the, we believe is meeting the intent and goals of the ordinance, but the residence isn't exactly lined up. The residence is toward the front of the property.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could just add something there?
Yes, sir.
So Christine can probably correct me, or Matt could correct me if I'm wrong. Residential properties are not a permitted use in the HD1 zone? Is that right, Matt?
Correct.
So it's possible in the foreseeable future, at some point in time, this could become a commercial property that becomes developed and there's no longer woods there, so you'd, you know, you could potentially have a 50-foot buffer for a commercial to a commercial property. So the board has any concerns about the buffer, that might ease their concerns, that at some point in time, you know, if this lot were to become more conforming with the zone, it could have a commercial property on it.
I know, but we have to deal with what's existing.
Certainly.
You know, at this time.
And that's why they're here, you know, asking for relief.
Okay.
The second variance for landscaping is that we are landscaping the front of the retail building, the foundation of the front, but not landscaping the sides or the back. That's an existing condition on the sides and the back. And we just would ask that the board be taking into consideration that landscaping on the sides and the back would be more of a maintenance issue and a trash issue than an aesthetic improvement. We'd rather put the landscaping in the other locations that Ms. Spiro has recommended.
Okay. Ms. Spiro, do you have an issue with that?
No, not at all.
Okay, thank you.
The last variance with regard to landscaping pertains to landscaping around the loading areas and the trash enclosure. We find, we don't want to ask for variance, we'll landscape around the trash enclosure. I think that's the better answer.
You good with that?
Yeah, in the letter, I offered some suggestions on how they could make that work. So, yeah, that's fine.
We're fine with the suggestions that appear at the bottom of Page 1 and top of Page 2 are acceptable. Then number three is technical comments, guidance, and direction from Ms. Spiro's office. And Mr. Zugner and I went through them, they are A through I inclusive, and we are comfortable stating that we will comply with all of the recommendations of Ms. Spiro in paragraph 3.
Okay.
We could do a little bit on the lighting of the site, the lighting. And a recurring theme where we have a hard time getting the average to work because of the new type of lighting, I think I've now had this on the last two or three applications with you, but if you could just go through the lighting that's proposed on the site.
So, well, obviously what we're proposing is modern, new light poles. Through the back of the site, there would be seven new, they call them shoebox, and they don't look like a shoebox anymore when they're LEDs, they're much thinner and less intrusive. Those lights, again, we have to have relief for the average and how we meet the numbers, but we believe it lights the site properly, we think we have the right level. I would note on all those new lights, the LEDs, it's very easy to control and adjust them, which was not true in many of the previous types of lights. So in terms of overnight hours when the business is closed, being able to tone the intensity down or have certain poles go off and have a more subdued overnight lighting, that's readily achievable, and it's really like a $35 part. You can actually have a controller in there so your professionals could come out to the site after construction and review how it's lit and adjusted. The new lighting's very nice in that fashion. The front of the site actually has existing lights there, both building-mounted and pole-mounted. We believe that's appropriate too. And if there were concerns, we could show your engineer the photometrics that are assumed based on that existing light.
So, Mr. Chairman, from the proposed lighting plan, there is a little bit of spillover onto the residential property northeast of the existing structure in the, next to the access aisle. Ken, would you be willing to have those lights on a timer so they shut off completely or on a dimmer to reduce any spillover after, say, 10:00 PM or something like that?
We don't even have to go that late. Let me share with you the hours of operation. Mr. Rappaport gave me permission to present certain facts with regard to his business, so with the board's permission and with your attorney's permission, I'd like to proffer the following facts on behalf of the applicant.
Mr. Tropoli, is that fine?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the hours of operation, which are stipulated, and if the board grants relief, we'd be comfortable that these be memorialized in the resolution, are 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday through Thursday, and 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM on Fridays. The business is closed on Saturday, and on Sunday, there is 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. We would be comfortable with the light dimmers being activated an hour and a half after the business closes. So we don't need to go to that 10 o'clock because we don't stay open that late.
Okay, now is the warehouse going to work the same hours?
Warehouse hours differ, the warehouse could open at 8:00 AM, but its hours, it closes between 6:00 and 7:00. And during the business day, the warehouse, there's the small vans that are transporting to other Emporios, but from 6:00 to 7:00, it's just the inter between the warehouse and this retail building.
Ken, that's the same days of operation as a retail?
Exactly the same. Yes. And I also wanted to point out that the business is established here in this area, it's 10 years in place, and there are six to eight full-time employees. Mr. Rappaport indicates it's a very stabilized business. If the business were to really grow, it might go to 10 employees, but that's a full house of employees for this business.
Now, whenever you say go to the 10 employees, does that include the warehouse staff also?
It does, it does, the total, correct.
So possibly maximum 10 employees.
We're very comfortable, Mr. Chair, yes. And the employees, it's a single-shift business, it's 10:00 AM to 7:00. It's 10:00 a.m. to 7:00. Not everybody works a full shift, but it's a single shift. It's not, there's not, it doesn't stay open until midnight. It doesn't open at 6:00 in the morning. And at any given time, the number of employees at the site would be six to eight. With growth, if it occurred, it would cap at 10. Those were the proffers that I would want to make as we're doing light.
Ken, just a real quick question while you're on the topic of employees. So one of the comments in our letter, and we discussed this previously, was, you know, traffic to the site. Is there any areas where you can dedicate to solely employee parking to try to minimize, especially behind the existing retail building, so you're not having vehicles coming in, backing out, while you're having, you know, the primary traffic to the site coming around to back there?
Sure. Clearly, the parking that's located in the front of the building along the highway is most attractive to the clientele. And then the building, the parking that's on the north side of the building, in close proximity to the retail building, is attractive. The overflow would be as you go deeper into the site, and we would propose that the entire rear parking field, which is located to the east of the warehouse building, would be dedicated as employee-only, and along the side would be an overflow for the holiday season and the back-to-school season, which are the times, the two times of the year that Mr. Rappaport's business experiences. The spring holiday season, the Easter into the spring, and then the back-to-school.
So, Ken, sorry, just to be clear, is that the east side of the proposed warehouse or the east side of the existing retail building?
East side of the warehouse building, in the back.
It's nine spaces at the back of the warehouse.
You know, I might suggest that that might be better situated at the back of the retail building. Like I said, that, to the south side there, that's your main access point to the entire site. You know, the parking right butts up to the building. It's kind of a hairpin turn there. You know, if you can restrict that to employee parking where they're not, you know, it's not a visitor coming to the site, a client who's backing out every hour or so, you're going to reduce the amount of, you know, conflicts with, you know, oncoming vehicles coming to the site.
Excellent advice, and Mr. Kennel with a nod of his head indicates that he thinks so, too, so.
That's behind the existing warehouse?
Sure. We thought the deep parking would be where you would like to see it, but we have no problem putting it in the, between the buildings.
Not only that, your employees don't have to walk from the rain all the way from the back all the way to the front, too.
They'll be very grateful that you made that accommodation for them, I'm certain.
Okay.
The last statute, if I may, the last statutory element of the site plan is signage. There's an existing sign located in front of the building. It needs to be refurbished. It needs to have the text and the sign face changed, but there's no change to the sign. Would you share with the board its location and just confirm the statements that I've made?
Sure. Again, I'm looking at A21. You can see at the center, bottom of the property, it looks like a, almost an orange eye. That's the existing sign. There'd be some added landscaping cleaned up around it. There's one particular tree we're going to try and save around that, the recommendation of your professionals, but that's where the sign is located.
I know that you've had an opportunity to do a number of things working with the professional staff, that you and other members of your professional staff have met on multiple occasions with the engineer and the planner. I know that there's, were field inspections conducted with the applicant and the professionals with Shari Spiro on the site, and you've had an opportunity, after receiving the most recent reports, to converse with the professionals by phone. I'm going to go through some of the points, but I'm going to ask in a general sense, are you comfortable advising the board that you're aware of the technical requirements of, Mr. Conliffe has memorialized in his February 20th report, and are you comfortable advising the board that you can and will address them?
Yes.
Couple of things I just would like to point out. We're on State Highway 9. State Highway 9, our driveways require DOT permitting. We have an application at the DOT as recently as this week. Last week, Mr. Kennel confirmed that we're about 45 days away from their written response. Amongst the things that we'll learn from them are their sidewalk requirements. So we're indicating that we're waiting for the DOT to advise us of the improvements, and if it includes sidewalks, we'll install them, but we don't know what the direction is.
Mr. Chairman, you know, obviously, Highway 9 is a major corridor that links, you know, Ocean County up to northern Ohio County. I can tell you, there's a lot of pedestrian traffic that's off in the shoulder areas on the side of there. And I think the township is looking for a lot of these commercial properties to start providing sidewalk along their frontages so that people aren't walking on the side of the roadway. You know, it's a matter of safety. I would make a recommendation that the board consider, you know, requiring that regardless of what feedback comes back from the NJDOT.
Do you have a problem with that, Mr. Pate?
Just confirm one thing. There's no difficulty accommodating a sidewalk across the front of the property as far as area to do so.
It certainly can be fit and accomplished.
Right. We have no problem with installing a sidewalk, Mr. Chair, subject to the DOT allowing same. Perhaps if we could have a letter from your engineer requesting it, we'll take it with us, we'll submit it to the DOT, and let them know it's your pleasure. That usually works.
That's, I can do that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I have nothing further of this witness. He remains available to you and your professionals for examination.
I want to ask the professionals first, do you have questions?
Yeah, let me just dump through my letter real quickly here.
You want me to cut in while he's filming?
Sure, you got it.
Sure.
One thing we didn't mention in my letter, the applicant does need to request a waiver to pay to the tree fund.
Thank you. So we are removing trees from the site, and as Ms. Spiro points out in her report, there's a per-acre contribution, it's a pro-rata, per-acre contribution for tree removal that's available when the site does not accommodate the replanting on-site. And I believe it's technically a waiver request for permission to convert some of those downed trees to cash to that fund. Well, to the extent that we can accommodate on-site, we will, but to the extent that we can't, we'd like to be allowed to participate in the fund. Thank you.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, the applicant is only proposing one loading zone for both buildings. Is that correct? That's going to be utilized for both uses there?
Correct.
Now, general operation of the site, traffic, and this might be a question for Scott as well. In our previous discussion, you said there'll be some semi-trailer traffic coming to the site to make deliveries to the warehouse?
My understanding is three, maybe four per month, and they would be the 40-foot trailer that would come to that loading zone. The rest would be typical box truck, a FedEx truck, or the little Sprinter van.
Is there a general time range when that's going to be occurring? Is it going to be off-hours for the retail use, or is it going to be occurring at the same time, or?
It's totally under the control of our client. The intention is to not have those vehicles come during hours that would be disruptive to any of our neighbors, so we would be during the business day, during the off-peak hours.
I would make a suggestion that, you know, you're working certainly with an existing driveway to the site that's 26 feet wide. Couple of your other aisles are also pretty narrow, you know, again, in the existing condition. If those tractor trailers could be coordinated when the business is not operating, you know, maybe from the 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. range, when you're not having a bunch of visitors to the site, it might be a little bit more manageable for those vehicles to get in and out of the site. That would be my suggestion to the applicant.
I, I'm going to ask one question. I'm looking at the drawing. Where do you see a 26-foot drive aisle?
Oh, sorry, I was mistaken there. So on the, wait, did I get that right?
On the north.
On the north side, it's 25 feet. Is it 26 feet? Yeah, on the south side, it's 26 feet. So they show a dimension of 29 feet there, but I believe the existing sidewalk is 3 feet there.
I think the 29 feet is the building to the property.
Okay. Yeah, what's the existing access aisle there?
Mr. Rappaport confirms that he does have control over times of delivery, and prior to 10 a.m., prior to the retail opening, would be an acceptable limit as to when those vehicles make deliveries.
Now, that would be just for the tractor trailers, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I'm not talking about all the box trucks.
Just the tractor trailers.
And we anticipate a grand total of 40 deliveries annually. That's the anticipated deliveries. It comes in seasonally.
I don't readily have that number. I think it's around 25 feet.
Okay. That satisfies my concern with access to the site. It gets a little tough to navigate it when you have trucks, you know, and vehicles backing in and out of spaces with the tractor trailer. We discussed the issue with the sidewalk across the frontage. Obviously, there's some relief needed for some of the architectural components with the warehouse building. I'll leave that to the board's planner to ask questions about that. As Ken said, they've met with the fire bureau. They've issued a bunch of comments and concerns. You know, this one's a little bit atypical. We try to see 360-degree circulation around the site. Obviously, they're hampered with that 50-foot buffer around the back there. What I will say is, that 50-foot buffer, they need relief because they are proposing some stormwater infrastructure within that buffer there. A lot of the times, that is more specifically reserved to stormwater basins and things like that, but the ordinance does say any stormwater infrastructure. It is underground. There is going to be landscaping plannings there, you know, so that's something for the board to consider when, you know, considering granting that relief of that variance. Question, one of the topics I had, you know, item discussion for the stormwater. So in reviewing the revised stormwater, there's a little, some of the numbers that are a little bit off, I'd just ask, you know, that the applicant work with us to make sure that they're providing the sufficient storage for the different storm events. There is a possibility that additional footprint of the basin might have to be expanded, or some other underground storage, you know, just to make sure that they're achieving that stormwater volume. You would have no problem with working with us if the board was favorably on that?
Of course not. We'd definitely work with you.
One of the things that we've been hovering on with the stormwater basins is liking to see a concrete curb along the emergency spillway just to stout the elevation. You know, once, once the basin were to overflow, or water comes out of the flare-den section, where's that water then go off the site? Is it going across existing development, wooded areas? Is there a creek downstream?
So it'll all head to the east from our site, and let me go back to, this is A19, and the top of this plan is east. It's all undeveloped, continues back to, I forget the name of the road, actually goes straight back all the way east.
Kent Road?
I'm sorry?
Kent Road? No.
That's West of Route 1.
Maxim Southern.
Yeah, Maxim. Yes, on the other side. I'm sorry. Maxim Road.
Because underneath that road and continues going east, there's a small creek, I believe the name of it is Dix Brook.
Correct.
And then ultimately, a mile or more from here, it gets into the Matitico. But it's all through woods. The general mapping, we obviously haven't been back in those areas off of our property, but the general mapping shows it is forested wetlands as you get back into properties to the east of us, so we have looked at that path, and we think that it's adequate even over this spillway.
So, and then one of the additional submittals that was provided by the applicant, there is, you know, a preliminary assessment done by DeBois Engineering showing that there is a presence of wetlands within 45 feet of the property line. Now, that's mapped wetlands on the GIS. That's not to say that, that's the 100% location of where those wetlands are. There is a possibility, if it's a 50-foot wetland that five feet of that or so comes onto the property. What I will also note is in their report, they did say there's potential habitat for an endangered owl species. Sometimes that could kick it up into a larger buffer for, you know, the wetlands there. On all likelihood, it could be 50 feet. I would just say that in the board's best interest, they should require LOI from DEP as a condition of their approval, just verifying the wetlands and the buffer, so that there's no issues with the stormwater basin back there. A lot of the stuff is just clarifying the details. They provided an access to the basin. I would just ask that, you know, they put the press curb in there, so for whatever reason, if you need to get it a riding mower or a walking mower, you got access there. The basin does back up to the back of the building and parking area there. In the past, the board has required timber guide rail, you know. I would make the recommendation to the board and to the applicant to provide that just for safety purposes. You don't want someone backing off the back into a basin there.
You okay with that?
All of those. And just as far as the LOI, we had a heads-up on that. We had done the wetland investigation but hadn't filed it when it was, when the conclusion was there was no wetlands on the property, but we have given direction to the environmental scientists to file it. It's worth noting, I've done, in the last year, I think I did three, this would be the fourth wetland delineation associated with Dix Brook, and they're all coming back at 50 feet, so we're pretty comfortable that that's what's going to occur. And all those recommendations are acceptable.
And then just one last question about the signage, Ken. So there's some existing directional signage at the entrance that's going to be removed. The existing site sign is going to be modified for the proposed clothing use in the front there. Is there going to be any building-mounted sign for that front building?
There's no designed building-mounted sign for the building. We would ask the board, if there is to be a building-mounted sign, it would be one that is consistent with your zone, and it would be subject to the sign permit being issued by Mr. Howard, and it would be a single sign on the front of the building.
That would be fine. We have a new sign ordinance that's under public review right now, and a second sign on the retail building would fit in the ordinance.
What about site signs?
There was a number of recommendations for safety signs throughout the site. We discussed that. We have no issue at all with putting safety signs, signs worn where there's crossings, identified to traffic where there's pedestrian crossings. We'll work with your staff to install all as requested.
Okay.
That's all that I have for now, Chairman.
Thank you. Most of my comments are for the architect.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So, we talked about spillage over onto the residence?
No.
Right?
With regards to the detention basin?
No, with the lighting we're talking about.
With the lighting, yes.
Oh, right. I thought you meant.
Can we replace the lighting so there is no spillage?
It's factual.
I mean, the answer is yes. There's a very minor amount on the plan, but the simple answer is yes, we can achieve no spillage.
All right. And then we talked about, so we're going to get to the parking later on, right?
But we identified that we went from 28 for a 15,000-square-foot building to 65 for that building, 3 for the warehouse. Our traffic engineer also has some testimony to support that that's adequate.
So you're parking in, not horizontal, so you're going vertical to the building, basically? Is there going to be any protection from that little walkway so that a car doesn't jump and hit a, you know, these things?
This is how I think we'll be putting bollards there.
Okay.
So, I agree with Mr. Sayah, that's a great suggestion. I just would ask for Ken to clarify. Now, is that going to be all existing concrete for the resident, no, sorry, the retail building up front, and then also for the warehouse that you're going to be providing bollards?
It would seem to me that the appropriate location for the bollards is across the front of the building.
Okay.
I think it's overkill to put it for the warehouse, but I agree with you.
Yeah. I will note, Mr. Sayah, that one of our recommendations, the configuration in the front, that you kind of had to jut out where vehicles could kind of pull right up and hit one of the columns in front, the applicant is proposing some additional curb and some landscaping to create like a landscaping bed and buffer from the, you know, the columns at the front of that existing building there, so that, that might also ease that concern as well.
Okay. I just have one question. On the north side, on the north side of the warehouse, there's a spot between the drive and the warehouse building. Is that going to be a walk, or is that, what kind of round cover?
Here?
Yeah, on the north side of the warehouse.
So it showed on my rendering in sort of a peachy color, that's concrete sidewalk around there.
Okay, it's going to be a sidewalk there.
Connects to a striped crosswalk in the parking area and up to the retail building.
Okay. Just want to make sure of that. Thanks.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I got just one, two more comments real quickly. So I will note that applicant is proposing a trash enclosure. I will say that the enclosure is, I believe it's six or eight-foot-high vinyl fencing. In the past, on most of these commercial applications, the board has required them to be
Thanks.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I got just one, two more comments real quickly. So I will note that applicant is proposing a trash enclosure. I will say that the enclosure is, I believe it's six or eight-foot-high vinyl fencing. In the past, on most of these commercial applications, the board has required them to be concrete masonry unit. They're certainly more substantial. You're going to have a lot of traffic coming in and out of the site. I, I would make that recommendation to the board and to the applicant.
Mr. Page?
It seems a little overkill, but it's not a problem to say yes. We're going to landscape it.
We, we normally request that.
It's not an unreasonable request. I won't, oh, you have another one?
And then just last thing, and we talked about this, Ken. So the driveway to the south of the existing retail building?
Yes.
It's twenty-six feet. It's tight. If you go out there right now, there's a lot of overgrowth of vegetation over that aisle for, you know, access purpose. I just remind the applicant that it's going to be their responsibility to maintain that, maintain the vegetation. So, you know, you actually have a twenty-six-foot-wide aisle there, not twenty-two or twenty-feet for vehicles getting in there.
Imposing that as a, a, a permanent maintenance responsibility as part of any relief is acceptable.
Any other questions from the board or the professionals?
Well, just, just to confirm, Mr. Chairman, the shea tree fund for the clearcutting, that's going to be a donation? Spiero, you've got that, right?
Yeah, I asked them to put, clarify the, you know, the amount. I calculated it's roughly fifteen thousand dollars that will go towards the fund.
I have, I have the same information. The only thing I would say is, we may be working with you. We may, that number may change if we.
Sure, right.
If certain trees are made changes.
Right, that's fine. But yeah, so the final calculations will be put on the plan, so when everything's complete, there'll be no confusion as to what they have to pack.
And then, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
The, the location of the trash receptacle, that's not going to interfere with the tractor-trailer coming in, making any turns or coming out?
We think it's perfect. Easily accessed the, for the front loader.
Mr. Sayah, they have, the applicant has provided a circulation plan for a semi-trailer, and they have provided a hatched area just to the east of the trash enclosure where, you know, the tractor-trailer could come into the site, pull forward, and then back up into that, you know, loading zone, and then make a turn and get out of the site. So, you know, they have provided that for that reason, and they have provided a circulation plan for that purpose.
With your, with, with your permission, I, the next witness that I recall is Mr. Kennel. We can just kind of, a lot of it's already been done, but we'll go through the specifics of traffic. Is that acceptable?
Any, any other questions? Okay.
And Mr. Kennel would come join, so don't leave us. The, I would like to point out where we go before we come to you. As I, you know that we went to Chief Lewis, and as his report is here, you know that we've spent time on the property with Shari, and her report is, is in front of you. We also went to the Environmental Commission. We made a presentation to them last month. They had reviewed it earlier in the year, but we went back to see them last month, and I noticed that they delivered a handwritten report, which I'm grateful for. We went to the county planning board, and they've released the application. They gave us a waiver letter. We've been to the DOT. It was a pre-application meeting and then a submission. We're down there now, waiting for the, their response, but we're comfortable, we're repurposing the existing driveway, so we're comfortable that we'll gain their approval. And we have our freehold soil conservation application that's been pending when we're finished with you, assuming and hoping that we earn your approval. Any final revisions that you recommend go in our freehold soil application, and that usually wraps it up. We also have a water and sewer application. The water and sewer is already, those applications have been made because the removal of the septic system and the removal of the well are conditions of using the retail building in the front, which use has already been permitted by the, by Mr. Howard and his staff. So that is all of the other approvals and permits that we are pursuing. Mr. Kennel could be swearing in.
Before we do that, we, let us take care of little board business real quick, please. Mr. Alfieri, you want to come forward?
Sorry, Ken. Dante Alfieri on behalf of the applicant, Stone Quest?
Yes, sir. Mr. Tropoli.
Given the latest of the hour, the fact that probably going to be at least another forty-five minutes on this application, I discussed briefly with Mr. Alfieri the fact that we're not going to get to him tonight. So we are looking at Mr. Alfieri to carry your matter to March, I believe?
Eleventh.
March eleventh. At seven-thirty PM with no further notice. Would that be acceptable to you, sir?
Yes, that's acceptable.
All your professionals will be available then?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need an extension of time?
And we do, yes. Will you give us an extension through the end of April?
Yes.
April thirtieth?
Okay.
On the record.
Okay. Anyone in audio for case number BA-1827 Euro Supply LTD, DBA Stone Quest LLC? This application will be carried to March eleventh, seven-thirty PM with no further notice. Expira, expiration date, April thirtieth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you, sir. Sorry we couldn't get there. Okay, Mr. Page?
Mr. Kennel's professional credentials on the record, please.
Good evening, board. As you know, I've appeared before this board on many occasions. I'm a principal with McDonough and Ray Associates. I have over thirty-five years of transportation and traffic planning, prepared over a thousand traffic impact studies, appeared on over a thousand site plan applications, again, many of them before this board, as well as the Howell Planning Board.
Sir, we accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wanted to ask that you'd be pretty efficient in your presentation. A lot of the issues have already been brought to the board's attention, and Mr. Kuntz has responded to them. But I just would like to go through some circulation. Are you comfortable that the, all of the travel ways that are shown on the plan will accommodate the articulated vehicle as well as the emergency vehicles and trash removal vehicles that are anticipated to come to the site?
Yes, I am. All large wheel-based vehicles, so have been designed to, the site's been designed to accommodate them.
And particularly the question about the access to the trash enclosure. I began to answer it, and then I realized it's yours to answer. If you could just point out how the trash enclosure can be easily.
Yes, as, as you notice by looking at the site plan, the trash enclosure is located approximately, I'm going to say thirty feet west of the warehouse building. So you're going to have the articulated vehicle in that cross-hatched area adjacent to the warehouse building, which then provides approximately twenty-five feet of pavement area to easily access the trash enclosure on the northerly property line. So I don't see any conflict. If that event should happen simultaneously, given the number of tractor-trailer deliveries on an annual basis, I would imagine that would be a rare occasion, but should it happen, the site's been designed to accommodate it.
And if you could speak to the, the parking. As you heard from Mr. Sogner, the built, the existing fifteen-thousand-square-foot retail building has functioned with twenty-eight parking stalls, and we're increasing the total to sixty-eight with three dedicated to the warehouse building. If you could share with us your professional opinion as to the adequacy of the parking that's proposed.
Yes, as has been stated, this is, I'll characterize it as a specialty retail, you know, men's clothing store. And based on, you know, this isn't a high-parking-generating use like similar to a convenience store. This is a defined trip and, you know, a defined purchase where there, the sales staff has got to spend time with customers come to the site. So as a result, it's expected that the number of customers onsite at one time may be fifteen to twenty. And then you translate that to vehicles. That puts you approximately twenty vehicles plus then the ten employees who may not all drive. Your maximum parking accumulation could be thirty. Maybe during the peak seasons, it could increase maybe to thirty-five, forty, but the sixty-eight parking spaces, in my opinion, are more than adequate for this type of retail use proposed. And given the, basically the fact that the fact that warehouse is tied in with the retail use in the front, I'm very comfortable with the parking supply proposed.
Would this be a very high turnover, you know, as far as parking, people coming in?
No, I mean, I would expect that people are coming to this store are basically here anywhere, the shortest time period should be twenty minutes, but generally an hour or so because they're here to get, you know, find menswear, and they're going to spend some time on here. It's, it's not similar to a convenience store or to a coffee shop where it's a five, ten-minute turnover. This is a much longer stay. Obviously, shorter than in office use, but as far on the retail end of it, it's, it's a longer stay than your quick-service type of retail use.
We, in your report, you did your research and cited your sources. If I remember correctly, you opined that approximately thirty stalls was, in your opinion, adequate for the operation of this business.
We had stated thirty to forty, correct, and that's consistent with my testimony.
And our client, I mean, speaking for Mr. Rappaport, our client felt that having extra parking was a benefit, so that we, we actually feel that with the sixty-eight stalls, we're twenty more than we're scheduled to need, which gives us a really nice reservoir.
But what would be, what is the requirement?
Well, if, if, the requirement is the one that comes from general retail. That's, and that, that's a hundred and four spaces.
So you are going to need relief from that?
We, as, as indicated by Mr. Sogner, yes. As far as the visibility from the, on the highways, if you could just indicate, straight, level road, no issues with site distance in any direction, no issue accommodating site triangles as required?
That's correct. We far exceed the recommended site distance. And again, it's just right turn in, right turn out. And more importantly, just to the south of the site is the Alexander Road traffic signal, which helps platoon the traffic and provide gaps. And we had presented in the traffic report that this driveway to operate Level Service B, which is very good, where he tried to, the design threshold is C to D. So we exceed that, and a lot of that has to do with the fact that we have a track, traffic signal in close proximity to help facilitate exiting movements.
Throughout the design process and the review by staff, there are comments made to add pedestrian crosswalks and other safety features, and the location of the handicap parking to be most consistent with ADA guidance and directions. You comfortable with all of those additions that have been incorporated into the plan? Find that the safety features requested by the board's staff are now a part of the plan?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, so we're comfortable, the testimony that we provided was to assure you that the onsite circulation met with Mr. Kennel's review, that the parking similarly met with his review, and that all of the driveways functioned safely. I have no further questions of Mr. Kennel. He's available to you and your board.
Many of the questions that we had, you know, Scott has addressed them. One quick question, so the existing site as it functions now, the two entrances, are they both one-way right now or are they currently two-way?
They function as one-way. I mean, based on my experience out there, and a lot of that occurred with the dualization of Route Nine.
So there's not much change in the traffic pattern of the entrance other than increased volume of vehicles coming in and out?
There's, there's a slight increase, but again, this, this site layout with the existing building kind of encourages the right-in, right-out design that we presented.
Okay. No, I, I'm not taking any objection. I was just, sometimes when you have two, two-way entrances and excesses, and now you're making it one-way each, that sometimes, you know, decreases the amount of conflicts that you have. That's the only reason why I asked the question. I, I have no further questions or objections.
I have a, just one more question. You've provided, you know, testimonials to the parking you thought was adequate. That totally makes sense. But do you know, and this may be beyond your scope, but will people, because they are going there for world clients, they're going for a longer time, will they be making appointments or anything like that? So there's kind of like slotted times or?
I'd have to defer that to client. I'm not aware of that, but.
Appointments are made with the tailor, not exclusively, but they're made with the tailor. So some of the clientele does come by appointment. I know that's.
And that would limit the amount of people coming at certain places.
You make your appointments with the tailor when the tailor's available and you're available, yes?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the professionals? Board, any questions?
Yes, so looking at the, the drawing, is that Scott, that it's one-way in and one-way out?
That's correct. The southerly driveway is the ingress. So as you approach in the site from the south, the first driver, you would make a right turn into the site, and then you have an option to continue to the easterly end of the site along the southerly side of the existing building, or you can make a left turn to access those parking spaces along the west side of the building or along the north side.
Because it's showing on this map, an arrow pointing east.
That's correct. That'd be the ingress for the southerly driveway.
No, on the north driveway.
That's the internal circulation.
It's just the internal.
Yeah, not, not the throat.
Okay.
Yeah, that just connects the two driveways.
Okay, just one clarification. Thank you.
This is a exit.
Yeah. Okay.
They, they will be signed, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, sir. So what, the sign would be, do not enter. If somebody misses the southern entrance, they're not going to, they'll be marking that they're not going to move, drive into.
There'll be, there'll be one-way signs added. It'll be marked accordingly, subject to NJDOT. We were deemed complete first week in January, so I would expect their review comments within the next thirty to forty-five days, and that is something that they'll give special attention to, and we'll have to address their recommendations.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you. Mr. Page? Mr. Chairman, the third professional witness at your option is our architect, and the reason I indicated our, your option, I wanted to make a point. Earlier today, I was in communication with Ms. Beam, who I understand is very ill. Ms. Beam indicated to, the front building, we have a demonstration of it, but it's already approved by the township. We're glad to show that to you. The back building, Ms. Beam stated that the plans as submitted are inadequate, but that she was comfortable that she, that the final design of the building and the incorporation of architectural interest elements would be something that she'd be comfortable doing as resolution compliance. And I make that statement only because it was in an email from her to me, and I returned to Ms. Bell to ask if she agreed.
I can confirm that Jen did say that, I could say that we're working with the applicant to hopefully get architecture.
We've done this before.
Yeah, and the current warehouse building, as it's been designed, which needs work according to Ms. Beam.
Do you have a problem with that? Okay.
So I think with that, although Mr. Gillis is here and certainly ready to show his buildings to you, I think it's not required.
I think, I think we can accept Mrs. Beam's recommendation there.
Tough taskmaster. The third and final professional witness is Christine Caphone, a professional planner who has the responsibility of providing proofs to this board that would justify the granting of the variance relief that we're asking from you.
We could, we could just pull her credentials from the files, right?
I actually have them a bunch of times.
Frequent flyer miles.
Just for the record, though.
When someone's good, that's who you use.
Well, she's been a regular face in front of the board, dear.
Yeah, it's nice to see you again. Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. For the record, Christine is Arrow Caphone. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. Been licensed for over twenty years, testified here in Howell and over four hundred other boards, and various other credentials, including land use instructor. My firm does public and private work, and my licenses are current and valid.
We accept your credentials.
Thank you.
Again.
I'm going to ask if Ms. Caphone will address the board in a narrative fashion. I think it's always valuable for the board to know the nature of the investigation that the planner does to be prepared this evening, and then to take us through the, the nature of the relief that we're requesting, and to identify the statutory elements of that proof, and then without my interruption, just take us through the, the facts that are before you that justify the granting of that relief.
Yes, of course, Mr. Page. So what we did with this application was what, you know, our practice, the board is our practice, the board is very familiar with on other cases. We visit the subject property. We have a conference with our project team. We review the application submission documents, and we review the professional review letters that your consultants and staff prepare. So in so doing, my firm did that. We participated in all of that. I had an opportunity to visit the subject property. The relief, as this board well knows, is a used variance for the storage building, but it's essentially in back of the existing building to be repurposed. And one of the things that stuck to me on particular suitability with this application is, boy, if you were to try to put a building behind this 571-deep lot, it would really have terrible frontage on Route 9. So it's really certainly not particularly appropriate for some of the retail uses permitted in the zone. So when you look at the application that's before you tonight, I think the board, based on the fact that this is a 571 linear foot deep, so that means referring to A21 in evidence, and the site has about 200 feet or 200 feet on Route 9, but then it goes back for 571 feet. Chairman Nancy was asking earlier if you can circle around the existing building, and you absolutely can't. The existing one-story commercial building sits about 86 feet off of, are you picking me up? So it sits about 86 feet off of Route 9. So it would be very difficult. Are you picking me up or no?
We are, but just in case.
Okay. You usually never have a problem hearing me.
I'm hearing you fine.
So it would be very difficult to take in place another retail building behind, behind that existing furniture building. Retail uses, as this board well knows, thrive on highway frontage, and it just simply wouldn't have it. So I think this site is certainly particularly suited for the proposed storage building. You also heard testimony tonight that it's going to be very limited, the truck traffic associated with that, probably far less so than if it were a permissible use in the zone. So I think the board can certainly conclude that the site is particularly suitable, not just for that second building, because we do need a D variance for two principal uses on one lot, but for the storage building or the warehouse building, because that's not a specifically permitted use in the HD1 zone. The retail building in the front is permitted. The D variance is triggered by the building in the back. So I think we certainly rise to our particular suitability proofs for both the storage as well as the two principal uses on one lot. The other thing I would point out to the board moving into the bulks is that we are within the impervious coverage limitation. So even though we ask, we are asking for some relief for the two principal uses on one lot, the intensity of the uses is such that we conform to the impervious coverage limitations of the HD1 zone. So I think the board can certainly consider that in your deliberations as well. So we would have to demonstrate to the board that one or more purposes of the land use law would be advanced by the grant of the application. So in my opinion, and after reading your master plan, and I'll talk about that a little bit more in the end, but I think the board can certainly rely on criteria A here, which talks about promoting the general welfare. The last thing we want in our highway corridors are vacant or buildings that are not being occupied. So certainly here, in my opinion, as a professional planner, repurposing this building for a commercial purpose in the Route 9 corridor promotes the general welfare. But I also think criteria G, which talks about sufficient space in appropriate locations, is satisfied by this application. And I also think the board can rely on criteria M in this particular case, which talks about an efficient use of the land and encouraging forward developments that are aimed at avoiding urban sprawl and degradation of the environment. And I think certainly putting the warehouse use behind the existing retail is an efficient use of the land. It's in an already commercial developed area. So I think it's absolutely consistent with criteria M of the land use law. So when you look at the negative criteria, the negative criteria has two prongs to it. The first is the impact on the zone plan. I see no substantial detriment to the HD1 zone plan here if this application is approved. There are a number of permitted uses in the zone, restaurants, tattoo parlors, retail uses, gyms, medical offices, that would be, or professional offices, that would be far more intense than the proposed storage use. So I see no substantial detriment to the intent of the HD1 zone if this application were to be, to be approved. Also, the HD1 zone has a specific stated purpose in it, which is to, to, the purpose of the HD1 is to provide for highway-oriented development in the Route 9 corridor on larger lots. And I think that this use absolutely does that. It provides for highway-oriented development. It provides for retail development. So I don't see any substantial detriment to the zone plan. The other prong of the negative criteria is the impact on the public good. And I'll talk about that a little bit more with some of the buffer variances that we're asking for, because the impact of the public good is the area and the properties that surround it. So as you can see from A21 in evidence, we are surrounded on our northern property by a, say it again? Okay, on the northern property by a commercial. But on our southern property line, we have an existing non-conforming residential property on Lot 15. So we are asking for some buffer relief, but in my opinion, I think we're meeting the intent of the buffer. The accessway that is currently in the buffer area is an existing condition that will not be impacted positively or negatively by this application. It prevails on the property today. While the pavement is not in great condition, you can certainly go out there and drive around to the entirety of the back of the building, because I did it. So it's certainly, you have to be careful. There are some certainly in need of resurfacing, but you can absolutely do it. And then you see in the back portion, where we are proposing the new building, we have a 50-foot buffer, and we are introducing a combination of landscaping and screening and fencing in that area. So truly, I think that the intent of that, the intent of that buffering is being met. You also see on that side of the building, we don't have the access on the residential side. We don't have a lot of intensity or parking on that side of the building either. And that was done specifically to shield that residential use from any of the activities that are on site. I would also note for the record, and it was asked earlier and answered, our residential use is permitted in the HD1 zone, and they are not, nor do they contribute to any of the stated purpose in the HD1 zone. Nonetheless, we do still have to buffer them, and I think this application did consider them and plan for them. And I think the plan that you have before you tonight is certainly an appropriate balancing of the site constraints and allowing the site to develop. The other variance that we're asking for is the parking. I think Mr. Kennel touched on that. I mean, we are really adding a substantial, a lot more parking to the site, and we're really not increasing the intensity or increasing the employees that are coming to the site. So from a planning point of view, I would see no reason to have additional parking on this site to meet the ordinance. We simply don't need it in conjunction with our application. And we, you know, we certainly would, I would personally, from a planning point of view, rather see buildings here to create to the vibrancy of the corridor, particularly when you look at the 2017 master plan goals, which talk about specifically to maintain and enhance a local economy that encourage the provision of more cost-effective public services in order to improve the quality of life for Howell Township residents, and to evaluate the potential for economic and rehabilitation plans in strategic locations within the township where appropriate, and to encourage sound land use development that can provide economic development opportunities while at the same time balancing the preservation of neighborhood character as well as the protection of environmental resources. So those goals come right out of your 2017 master plan, and I think that the application that you have before you certainly meets all of the, all of our statutory burden of proof for particular suitability, positive and negative criteria. And I don't think it will have a substantial detriment or substantial impact to the zone plan or public good here in Howell. I think it will be an upgrade to the site, which the site certainly needs, and the repurposing and revitalization of an existing vacant building, which I think is not only beneficial to the Route 9 corridor, but it is very consistent with your master plan and some of the goals that you wrote into that master plan.
I have no questions of Ms. Caphone. I appreciate the thoroughness of her presentation.
Thank you.
Ms. Bell?
I think Ms. Caphone did a good job of, you know, meeting all of the criteria, explaining all the criteria. I have just one question for clarification from all of us. I think when describing the buffer area, you said that there was screenings and plantings. I just wanted to make sure that there's no fencing going in the buffer areas that...
We offered it, but I think that it was something that you found not to be required.
Great, thank you.
Chairman, I just have two quick questions, and it might not be for Christine, it might be for the candidate or the owner to answer. So as far as the warehouse space and the use on the site, all the goods are coming to the facility in essentially a finished state. There might be some minor tailoring and sewing associated with getting them fit to the people, but there's no garments coming and getting assembled at the site or anything like that, right? It's all finished product?
No fabrication, no manufacturing, no. There's tailoring.
Yeah, that's within reason. I just want to get that on the record. And then, as far as the rear building, that's just going to be for the warehousing and some minor office space. There's not going to be any subletting or any other uses other than the applicant's warehousing of their clothing goods?
The answer says yes, no exceptions.
That's all I have.
Any questions of the board?
I have one question, but it's, I guess it would be for the engineer. Just, can you explain to me in both buildings, you're going to have restrooms, and I guess you're going to put new ones in, I'm assuming. And you're going to have a men's room and a women's room in each one. And is the new building going to have like a baby changing station? I know it's governed by the county, but I'd like to know what it is.
It's all to code. Honestly, Mr. O'Donnell, because none of us here are in the construction element, just the site element, where...
Well, what is the code? What's the code?
I don't know. I mean, it's all...
I have to know. I don't know the code either, but I go in these places, this is a retail business, and they have one restroom, one men's room, for one person. There's 20 people in the store. That just isn't going to cut it.
The only thing maybe I could quickly add, the new building, the warehouse, that's not for retail use.
I'm not questioning that.
That's just for, just would be employees back there. Retail use would all be in the existing building.
Chairman? Yes.
I am able to share with you that the retail building will have separate designated men's and women's bathroom facilities.
Would it accommodate more than just one person? That's, I think that's what Mr. O'Donnell's...
When these issues come, that is a building code requirement. Each building type and each building size has a building code requirement.
Matt, is that, in your department, is that just strictly the county?
No, that'll be Uniform Construction Code, I believe, in building department, not land use.
I think it's got to be ADA required.
Who regulates it? The town or the county?
I believe it's UCC, Uniform Construction Code.
Department of Community Affairs, I think, out of Trenton.
Oh, out of Trenton.
And two, it's going to have to be ADA required, you know?
Oh, absolutely.
Meet ADA. So that means it's going to have to meet a handicap, they're going to have to have a handicap stall, handicap sink.
That I understand. It's just that, you know, in a men's room, one urinal, don't cut it. And there's places in this town, that's all they have.
I know.
And it just perturbs me that they allow that. I guess I'll complain to the county or the state.
I think it's the Uniform Construction Code that you need to, or our building department to find out, you know, what they need to do.
The plans that were submitted to your building department, as I indicated, the front building has, is, the repurposing of the front building does not require this board's approval. So that works. Those plans are, and looking at a portion of the plans that have already been submitted, and it appears that there is, there are two facilities in the men's room and two in the women's room, two separate facilities, a toilet and a urinal in the men's and two toilets in the women's.
That's adequate.
And that's the way it was submitted for review.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pate, you know, considering the times and hours of the operation and so forth, I would be very comfortable if the applicant would be more amenable to allowing Title 39 be invoked, where...
Absolutely. Absolutely. We'll make application to the township and to the police department so that all of the traffic regulations can be enforced on site. I appreciate you bringing it up.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any further questions of Ms. Caphone? See you, nun. Mr. Pate? No, I, Mr. Pate?
That is, that is your applicant's direct presentation, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any other witness?
I don't know if you have a public, but I know they're next.
Okay, now I'll take a motion to open to public.
Motion to open a public.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell?
I'll second that, sir.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Is there anyone in the audience who wish to come forward, make a statement or ask a question of any of the witnesses? See you, nun. Can I have a motion to close?
Motion to close.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Massa. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Mr. Pate?
I would, I'll be very brief, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This is a request by a gentleman who has purchased a building with the goal of revitalizing it and repurposing it. An established business in the community is being relocated to the building. Commitment to completely revitalize the building, completely revitalize the site, to add safety and health features such as the stormwater management system and a modern lighting system and a landscaping system that's currently not in place. The warehouse building that we're asking for is a compatible use directly related to his business. The location of it on this site, as identified by Ms. Caphone, is a very logical and consistent with both the zoning ordinances and the master plan, notwithstanding that the D1 variance is requested. With all of the commitments that the applicant has made to the board, and with the understanding that any resolution will memorialize all of those commitments, we ask that the board consider favorably the D1 variance for the warehouse storage building and the amended site plan for the site as submitted with the bulk variances that were identified by the professionals. Thank you.
Any further from the professionals?
Mr. Chair, I just want to commend the applicant, their attorney, and their whole team. You know, my review letters are pretty lengthy. You know, we have a lot of suggestions in there. We have a lot of applicants that come through that don't look at the letters and address a lot of the comments. You know, I think they're made a lot of concessions and have agreed to do a lot of things. So I think the board should definitely weigh that in their consideration of this application.
Thank you. Any further from any of the professionals? Matt, Ron, any further questions or comments from the board? What's the pleasure of the board?
Members of the board, this is a business that's been in Howell for 10 years, and they are now moving across Route 9 to a lot that is right now not in use, and they are going to make some major improvements to the lot and also expand the business. I'm going to make a motion to approve this application, allow the 68 parking spaces for the applicant to comply with Ms. Spiro's recommendations for landscaping, to have the lights dimmed an hour and a half after closing, the parking for employees will be behind the existing building, have lands, excuse me, have a sidewalk on Route 9, track the trail of deliveries before 10:00 a.m., give relief for the buffer for the stormwater drainage, have an LOI from DEP, have a timber rail by the basin at the end of the parking lot, the ballards in front of the retail building, and then to comply with Ms. Beam's for the architecture design for the warehouse.
Motion by Mr. San Clemente?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Merton. Any further findings of that?
No. Good application, as far as I'm concerned.
We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Massa?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Morosco?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
And Chairman Nancy?
As Charles stated, very well-prepared application. Thank you for visiting with our professionals prior to coming to this board. It makes our job a lot easier. My vote is yes. Thank you.
To all, thank you and good night.
You too.
Good night.
Okay, any further business of the board?
Yes, sir.
See you, nun. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Hughes, seconded by Mr. Morosco. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Zone board adjourns at 10:35.